Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board, Tuesday, April 5th, and of course it's being held at Corpus Christi this evening. It will be audio and video recorded and can be later found on our YouTube channel. We call this meeting to order with an opening prayer by our student trustee, Jackson.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. God's mercy is ever-present and ever-abundant. In this jubilee year of mercy, we are all called to look in our hearts and recognize our sinfulness and our need for God's mercy. But this is not a year of sad reflection on our sinfulness, rather it is a year of rejoicing that God's mercy is gracious and overwhelming. Mercy is not earned, it is given. The year of mercy is meant to be one of those times, a season for Christians to become stronger and more effective witnesses to the faith we proclaim, changing both by contemplating the depths of God's mercy and by imitating Christ in the world today. So we pray for the Holy Spirit to guide us. Let us pray. Lord, send your Holy Spirit and consecrate every one of us with its anointing so that the Jubilee of Mercy may be a year of grace from the Lord, and your church with renewed enthusiasm may bring good news to the poor, proclaim liberty to captives and the oppressed, and restore sight to the blind. Amen.
Thank you, Jackson. And now for the motions adopted or information received in camera. Trustee Intomasi, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me? I don't know if this is...
Not well.
How's that? Is that better? Okay. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the attached memorandum of settlement between the Board and QP Local 2888 Custodial Maintenance to be effective September 1st, 2014, and to expire August 31st, 2017. Further, resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the attached memorandum of settlement between the Board and QP Local 3166 Clerical/Technical to be effective September 1st, 2014, and to expire August 31st, 2017. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept with regret the retirement of Paul McMahon Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer effective July 15th, In HR reports, we have retirements of Judith Ashley, Mary Atkinson, Sonia Bien, Victoria Hogan, Deborah Kirkpatrick, Sabina McPhee, Linda Molinaro, Richard Naseyuk, Mary Ellen Petrarka, and Dwight Yonker effective June 30th, 2016. In school administrative appointments effective September 1st, 2016, we have Jeff Kroll and Viviana Verrano appointed as elementary school principals, Gino Giaccoloni and Mark Witter appointed as acting elementary principals, and Angie Barden and Sandra Miller appointed as elementary vice principals. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intomasi. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Trustee Trite, seconded by trustee Rabenda, all in favor, so moved. Any declarations of conflict of interest this evening? Seeing none, there are no presentations. Couple of delegations. We'll proceed with our delegations as listed in order. You will be given an eight-minute warning, two-minute warning, at eight minutes. Our director will be our timer and will stand at eight minutes. Ten minutes will be your finishing time. So let's go. Proceed with number 5.1, and we'll start with Stacy Bean and fellows from St. Dominique's.
My name is Stacy Bean, and I'm pleased to introduce to you Michelle Sparrack and Carolyn Suter. We are here this evening on behalf of the St. Dominique School Council to show support for the proposed Modified Pupil Accommodation Review Process for South Central Oakville. On December 18th, 2016, St. Dominique Elementary School will celebrate its 60th birthday. We, along with the St. Dominique staff and parent community, feel blessed to have a school so rich in traditions and history. Many of our teachers have taught at the school for 10-plus years, and we have parents who have attended St. Dominique's when they were children. As such, our decision to support the Modified Pupil Accommodation Review (it's awful) didn't come lightly. The 60 years have been kind to St. Dominique, and she has been well-cared-for and maintained over the years. However, as we know, in this day and age, there's nothing wrong with having a little work done to make ourselves young and with the times. A renovation to St. Dominique's would provide our children and the staff with the tools and environment necessary to realize their full potential. 21st-century learning provides the students with digital literacy, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills, all key components that students need to develop in order to be successful in the information age. Lighting is, and always has been, a key element to designing and operating schools. Studies have shown that students learning in schools with more natural lighting have better work habits, improved academics, and resistance to fatigue, providing them with a more positive attitude throughout the day. The increased natural light will be welcomed by both teachers and students at St. Dominique, who today spend a portion of their day in a classroom with no windows. Dedicated rooms for science, music, and art will provide optimal opportunities for learning. Well-designed facilities can enhance both the teacher's ability to teach and the success of the student's learning experience. No longer will it be necessary for the teachers to spend time packing and unpacking their supplies as they move from classroom to classroom.
Hello, I'm Michelle Sparrack. I have two boys in the Catholic system, one still at St. Dominique's and one now in St. Thomas Aquinas. Another reason why we support this plan is it includes a natural playground, outdoor area, which, I'm not sure how many of you have seen these natural playgrounds, but they're amazing. They bring kids back to nature and make outside play learning and fun with things like amphitheaters, blackboards, whiteboards, mazes, sideways trees that you can climb, vertical logs for fort building, et cetera. Research has shown that these natural environments have advantages over traditional playgrounds in that they stimulate more diverse and creative play, and teachers have observed an increase in attention after kids come in from playing in these types of playgrounds over traditional playgrounds. And for us, something really important also is in the reconfiguration of our school. The natural, the regular playground would be redone at the back of the school, and the grading would be improved so that there were less, what my children call "blacktop days", where they walk and talk because the field is saturated with rain, and for two boys, that's a real problem, number one on their list. The other really important thing for the parent community and the teachers and the children is to have a double gym, which is proposed in the new build, which will allow for one assembly to comfortably accommodate all the children in our school. We're well over 600 now, and we do not comfortably accommodate the children in this current arrangement. So it's really important when we put on school plays, competitions, anything like that, that everyone can assemble comfortably in the same arena. And it's really important, I don't know if you know this, but every year, St. Dominique's has a special Remembrance Day annual event where we invite dignitaries and veterans, and again, a modernized, larger auditorium would really, with better technology, as Stacy referred to, would really be an asset. And another really important thing in the size of the school and the amount of children that we have now is to improve the parking and the traffic flow. The new design of our school would do that. With the population of our school has been rising lately, and more so with the younger. I think we're now at over 145 in the kindergarten population, which means a lot more people driving their children to school every day. And the way our school is configured right now is that where the buses pull up and where the parents do the drop-off is right in front of the kindergarten area, which leads to a lot of congestion. In the new configuration, the parking lot would be greatly extended, and there would be a bus loop and optimal parking, which would really show a much safer and easier access to dropping our children off.
My name is Carolyn Suter. I have two children at St. Dominique, and I'm happy to be here this evening. The addition of a childcare facility on the St. Dominique property will simplify life for families with children at various stages. The convenience of one pickup and drop-off for the children is invaluable, and will certainly make the transition to kindergarten an easier one as the surroundings will be familiar. The combination of a modern school with a childcare facility will likely be an attraction for young families to relocate to the community. Overall, we see plenty of benefits to the plan for the entire St. Dominique community. We recognize that to achieve the end state, a relocation is required for a 12- to 18-month period to St. James, while the rebuild is taking place. This will require adjustments to routines for many families, and adjustment to a new environment for staff and students. Overall, the St. Dominique School Council sees this as short-term pain for long-term gain for the community. Thank you for your time this evening and providing us with the opportunity to voice our support for the Modified Pupil Accommodation Review Process for South Central Oakville.
Thank you very much for your delegation. Do the trustees have any questions for clarification purposes? Seeing none, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
not make a mistake, especially pronouncing your last name, Tenessa.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Tenessa Van Hukellem. I currently have two boys at St. Paul's School in Grade 4 and Grade 1.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Needham, and I have Chris Needham and Tenessa Van Hukellem here with me. We'd like to start off by saying that we appreciate the time you're taking to listen to our concerns, and we do realize that you are attempting to make a decision that's in the best interest of the Board, our communities, and most importantly, our children. Unfortunately, this specific proposal has come up short. And I'll now pass it over to Chris, who'll take us through the presentation.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to start by taking a quick look at what the Halton Catholic District School Board says about school lot size. And as you can see from the policy, I believe it's policy 4-6, it states that a school should be, an elementary school shall be eight acres or six acres if it's beside a park. Further, in the Options Development Criteria document that we saw, it states that site size should be approximately five-plus acres. So the question is, why does it need to be five acres? And I think it also clearly states right there, "It's so that we can provide adequate play space, parking facilities, pickup/drop-off, bus loops, and other necessary exterior accommodations." So let's compare policy to the proposal that we were given. The Burlington-Southwest proposal calls for the merging of two schools, approximately 550-plus students, into a site that's less than two acres. There's no parking spots, there's no bus loop, there is limited play space already that's going to further be decreased by building an addition. The school, as stated in the document, was built to accommodate 385 students maximum. Bathrooms, hallways, the gym, other school features are not being renovated or included as part of the addition, and they cannot accommodate the planned number of students. So how does this stack up to the other proposals you're looking at, which sound really nice, actually? There's four proposals. This is the only one that's not building a new school. This is the only one that's building or proposing something smaller than the five-acre recommended lot size. It's the only one without a bus loop, it's the only one without parking spaces, it's the only one without playground space, and the only one without sports fields. The report, as written, is very inconsistent in the evaluation, so it might give some false information or lead you to making false assumptions. In the report, it's constantly saying that five acres is undersized, and five acres, anything less than five acres is unsuitable. Until you get to the Southwest Burlington proposal, and then we hear, "Well, lot size is not that important at all." We learned that no parking on-site, well, that's okay, we can, you know, look away from that. We learned that church property can now be counted as school space, that's interesting. Things that are written as negatives in the other three proposals are suddenly turned into positives, or they're very much played down in this specific proposal. We read that St. Patrick's is too small at four acres. St. Rayfield's at 1.86 can't accommodate 640 pupils. Yet, here we are, 1.9 acres, we're being told that 550 students, yeah, no problem. Here's a great page. When we get to the comparison of St. John's specifically versus St. Paul's, we find that St. John's usable space now includes church property. Yet, if you look at St. Paul's, we actually find out that the usable space doesn't include school property, property owned by the Board that our kids use every day. So it's these kinds of inconsistencies throughout the report that make it a little bit frustrating for us to read. So what do people say about the St. John's site? Basically, here's a quote, "The total available parking and drop-off area is inadequate for a school with approximately 300 pupils." So who wrote that, or who said that? That's the Halton Catholic District School Board. Here's another quote, "I can assure you that the residents have not been properly informed that the school board is planning to undergo a major construction project, double the size of the school, increase traffic congestion in their area, or use their street as a bus lane." That's from someone who has a parent living on Cortland Drive. Respondents were concerned with added traffic in an already busy parking lot with poor traffic flow and the challenges posed accessing and exiting the lot on an already busy street. Those are concerns raised by St. John's parents. That is prior to St. Paul's students going there. Other feedback, here's someone, "My child goes to St. John's, and the building is lovely and more modern, but the physical space doesn't make sense. It would be better to sell the property St. John's sits on and rebuild a very modern St. Paul's." There's lots of comments in the report saying the same things. So what does this mean? Why do we care about site size, and why is it important? Why is a bus loop important? Well, we're looking at a school where 50% of kids take the bus to school. We're going from 30 students taking a bus to 277 students taking a bus. That's a large increase. Actually, it's 827% increase. What about the buses? We're going from one bus to maybe nine, maybe 10, I'm not sure, I didn't see an exact number, but 277 students don't fit on a single bus. So what are we going to do with all the buses? It's not a small increase, and it can't be downplayed. What about the cars? The lot has 45 parking spots. Of course, those are not school parking spots. Those are owned by the church, they're used for church events. There's limited street parking. If, St. Paul's currently has 107 parking spots that are full every day at pickup, so I'm not quite sure where those people are going to go in the limited space that we have. We also have to remember that kids from St. Paul's are traveling an average of more than three kilometers, so no one's going to be walking to school, no one's going to be riding their bike. Everybody's going to be taking a bus or getting picked up and dropped off. Let's talk about those buses again. If you take a look, there's a couple options where you could put the buses. If you look at the parking lot, clearly that's not your option. We've heard that there's going to be a bus lane built on Cortland Drive, but I'm not 100% sure that it can even hold that many buses. We haven't read anything about the practicality of that plan, nor are there any costs in your proposal for actually building a bus lane on Cortland Drive. I also should note that Brant Street South is a single lane, and the turning lane to go left onto either Blair Home or into the parking lot can accommodate one bus or maybe three to four cars. Anything above and beyond that, we are backed up into traffic, and we have gridlock coming south on Brant Street. Simply, there's no room on this site. There's limited play space, we're talking about an addition with some portables that is going to eat into the already limited space, and there's no room to grow. It's, we're surrounded by space that we do not own and we cannot build on. The school is going to be over capacity on day one. The Board states that the site could accommodate a maximum of two portables, and that's before we even looked at the addition. Now, how many portables do you think are practical on that space? Question is, where will we grow if those projections that you're talking about are off? And to discuss that, I'll pass it over to Tenessa.
Thank you, Chris. Declining enrollment. We've been hearing this over and over as the Board's main argument for the need to consolidate our schools. The Board ascertains that the schools need to be at a max capacity to be financially responsible. In response, we could argue that our schools are at 80% capacity, and that the cost of busing students, renovations, and creating transition committees would far outweigh any savings gained. We could talk about the same arguments and mistakes that we've seen in the public system when they closed Strathcona School due to declines, and Tuck is now overflowing in portables only a few years later, or we could reference Lake Shore Public that only had 160 students when parents fought to save it, and now has a waitlist for enrollment. Numerous sources give evidence to the contrary of declining enrollment. The Drummond Report states declines will continue to happen until 2014 and will start to go up in 2015, 16. It further states that this increase will happen even in areas that have seen steady declines. Our ward counselors have talked about the growth they've seen and they expect, and realtors in the area have stated that the sale of detached homes in the area over the past five years has doubled from 2010, going from 83 to 170 in 2015, and that the majority of these homes are being sold to families or people planning to start families. I've seen this in my own backyard as a residence in the St. Paul's school area with almost 10 houses sold to families on my street alone in the past two years. The Southwest proposal, as Chris stated, will put the new school at capacity the year it opens. St. Paul's, or sorry, St. John's lot size cannot accommodate more than two portables safely and only on a temporary basis, as per the Board's own report. With class sizes at a cap of 25 students, we're now looking at a maximum of 50 students that can be accommodated in portables. Only 50 students. The City of Burlington's own growth plan calls for 5,000 new residential units to be built in the next 15 years in our proposed boundary, and there are almost as many residential units planned for St. John's and St. Paul's boundary than almost the entire Burlington, City of Burlington combined. So I ask you to think about how few 50 students really is when we talk about these numbers. With no room for St. John's to expand further and no more local Catholic school options because you will eliminate them from Burl Oak to Brant Street, if the Board is wrong about enrollment projections, where do the rest of your Catholic students go? Thank you.
And above and beyond that, do you really want to spend $5 million on renovating a school that opens above capacity with zero room for growth? So to summarize, I think we've clearly demonstrated the reasons why we think this proposal is absolutely not acceptable. You simply can't fit that many kids into an already undersized space, and you can't tweak space after the fact. You can't hire a consultant.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time. If trustees have any questions for clarification, now is the time. Seeing none, thank you very much.
I'm Dallas Nicholson. I'm a parent at St. Joseph's School and have been since 2004. Currently, I have a child in Grade 4 and a child in Grade 8. My eldest is currently at St. Thomas Aquinas. Over the last 12 years, I've been actively involved in the student community or in the school community at St. Joseph's. Currently, I'm the School Council Chair.
My name is Craig Reddick. I also have two kids at St. Joseph's. One child is going to enter kindergarten next year, so I guess I have one and a half in St. Joseph's, and I'm part of the Parent Council as well. And we're both here to represent both our Parent Council and the majority of the parents at our school and our community. I'd just like to say the past presentation was really well-done, so I couldn't help but identify that. Was it me? So our presentation is ringing in the microphone. It's going to be a little bit shorter, and it's basically in support of the recommendations for our schools coming together. There's three things we wanted to outline here today, why we are in favor, and then some considerations at the end, because as with all of these proposals, I'm sure, even though we are largely in favor of this, there's a lot of things that we would like the Board to know that need to be considered in this kind of process, which we sure you have. So the three things we wanted to start with were, that sort of made us in favor of this. First was the idea of a modernized school. Our school was built in 1957, so having a school with modern facilities is the first reason. The second one is the quality of the experience for the students and the teachers and the parents and the community. Was that everyone? And the third was enhancing the school communities by bringing two communities together. Our communities, although very close together in a similar warden area of town, are very unique in their needs and in the school communities, so. So when it comes to us supporting this, having a new facility is one of the things that makes it easier to accept, things like portables for a year, or my daughter coming in her first year of kindergarten and having to go to a different school first and then come back to the school that we started with or the location we started with. That's not something that we like, but it's worth it when we talk about the design of the school. And I think the presentation we received really represented a lot of thoughtful planning and examples of this type of school. It's a really beautiful type of facility, and you really, it's hard to question in our plan, you know, the positive part. The other piece is, of course, accessibility and accommodations, which are very important, not only for the people that we want to be accessible to, but also for our kids to see that there's an effort being made there and that everybody has access to good education. A large gymnasium for us, of course, I mean, look at the size of this room here and what we can do in it. That's great, both for our community in Dallas, we'll talk about that a little bit, as well as it allows us to be able to do more stuff. We've got a lot of great events in the larger facility. It would be great, so.
We believe that a new school will greatly enhance the educational experience of our children. There'll be a sense of pride in a new and beautiful building. The abundance of natural light has been shown to have a positive impact on both staff and students. Some of these points will have been mentioned earlier, and you'll probably hear again, but these are things that are important to our families. More teachers and more support staff will offer greater and varied opportunities for extracurricular activities, and that way, we can better meet the diverse needs of our school community. The new school will offer more and better-equipped spaces to suit a variety of activities, including music, science, and special education. Smaller schools have a greater incidence of split classes, which make it challenging for teachers to deliver the curriculum effectively to both grades. Split classes can also have social challenges for the students in those classes. Consolidation means a larger school community for our children, which we see as a benefit. Children will have a larger peer group and therefore a greater selection of friends to choose from. Educators will have the flexibility to manipulate the cohort if it's not working well, rather than children staying together for potentially 10 years. Children will have more adults to interact with and different points of view, thereby giving them a broader sense of the world. All of this has been shown to ease the transition All of this has been shown to ease the transition to high school, many of which have a student population of over 1,000. We believe that a larger gymnasium will enhance the sense of community, as we will be able to host comfortably community events in one space. Declining enrollment in both St. Joseph's and St. James' means we will ultimately face a boundary review in coming years. In all likelihood, that would mean that one or both of our schools would be shut down, and we would be either merged or split up into an older building. It's really important to us that we take advantage of ministry funding while we have it. Finally, sense of community starts in the heart of individuals. We believe this new school will have a small school feel with all the advantages and resources of a larger school. School councils can achieve this goal by working together to maintain open communication and creating opportunities to build camaraderie among students, staff, and parents.
So, this is our final slide, considerations, and it's also a summary to say, really, this slide, to me, is about change management. One of the positive parts of this process for us so far was the presentation we did receive was, you know, was thorough, and there was good information, and there was good evidence and good research in our specific proposal, and it was presented clearly to us as a council, and there's been good community engagement in the initial stages of this process. And, you know, we're interested in the transition process minimizing the effect on students, of course, and a lot of that has to do with making sure that parents, parent councils have the information they need, or know what's coming, you know, with regards to things like parent councils and finances, and how will that be merged and dissolved, or amalgamated, you know, making sure that we're informed on these things ahead of time. It will avoid a lot more work later on, so we're really interested in that. We're also interested in the fact that, like I said, our two schools are one community already, really, but they're very, very unique in the needs and in the demographics, psychographics of those two schools, and there's history with those two schools as well. There are physical pieces of history, and there are cultural pieces of history in both schools, and those are major considerations, I know. And the parents knowing that the Board has the best interest of those things in mind really can put people at ease in this process, and I think it's important. Other things like making sure that there is a transition plan being thought out, as much as there was thoughtful planning in the beginning, there needs to be thoughtful planning in the throughput time. And I think I said the other two points here about communication, planning, and execution, and openness. The community engagement piece needs to continue throughout the process to make sure that it can be a positive transition, and doesn't need to be a perfect one, but it needs to be a positive one, so we're here in favor of the plan.
Thank you for hearing our delegation tonight.
Thank you.
Excuse me, just one moment, if there are any questions for clarification. Trustee Carabella.
Of course. No questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm just wondering, from a faith perspective, currently, do the children at St. Joseph's have mass at their gym, or do they get bused to the church?
They do both.
Can you?
They do both. We have masses in the gym regularly, and we also try to move people to the church two or three times a year.
Okay, thank you. And is it St. James' or St. Dominique's?
Dominique's.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have two kids to voice, one starting JK this year, it's September 16, 2016, and another one hopefully starting in two years at the St. Paul School. Here to talk about the transition year for the Southwest Proposal. After reading the interim staff report for the Burlington Southwest QWOB Project School, we are left with many questions and concerns. The main question related to the transition plan is, what will happen to our children during the transition year? The interim staff report only talks briefly about a transition plan on Section 4, a total of one page out of the 28 pages included in the report. This means that 27 pages were used to justify the project, while only one page is used to explain the Board's approach to the transition. It appears that the staff is more concerned about the end result, which is consolidating the two schools and gaining access to the ministry funds than how to get there. Transition is not just placing our children in portables and hoping for the best. They deserve better than that, and as of today, the staff hasn't provided one good idea that would ensure that our kids won't be an afterthought during the transition period. It is like hoping that parents will support a school trip for their kids without knowing how, when, where, and by whom they are going to be taken to their destination. Not many parents will see this with good eyes. The entire proposal has been a rush. A transition plan that is likely to take a minimum of one year at best, or possibly more time, can be taken lightly. It needs to be planned from the beginning. The lack of information can be also concluded from multiple comments and questions from the community that are included in the report. For example, and I quote, "The main challenge I see is for the transition year. I am concerned with regard to the placement of portables to allow for an adequate amount of play area." Another comment states, "Transitional issues for children has not been properly addressed." In addition, as you can see from the report, Section 5, the staff stated, and I quote, "No modifications were made to the initial accommodation plan based on the community feedback," end of quote. After all, we are not being taken into consideration and left with a lot of questions and concerns. Overall, you can sense an uncertainty feeling from parents as we don't have any concrete information as to what will happen to our children during the transition. The only factual information provided to us about the plan is that around nine portable classrooms are planned to be installed at St. Paul to accommodate all students from St. John's. About portables and safety, according to the information provided by the staff, the portables will be located in the paved space. Looking at the site, the spaces available are either the parking lot or the playground. In the report, the staff already points out that St. Paul's small frontage poses a limitation for bus and vehicle access. Therefore, if portable classrooms are placed in the parking lot, the drop-off and pickup process will be chaotic. It also will make the street and the parking lot more congested, hence accidents more likely to occur when students come and go from the cars and buses. The only space available then will be the paved play area. The nine portables will represent about half of the entire paved play area, as you can see in the picture. Taking in consideration, hello? Taking in consideration that the school students will double, the play area will be reduced to almost nothing. Having such a large number of students in a smaller area potentially increases the cases of bullying amongst the students and teachers. On top of this, although these units are heated and cooled as needed, it has been reported on other schools that during peak summer and winter days, the units get too hot or too cold to be safe and comfortable for the kids to be in them, even with age back system. Hence, it would be necessary to move them inside the main building in such occasions. The question is where? There would be no room indoors to hold all the students. Moreover, inside the units, there are no washrooms. Therefore, children will have to leave the portables and walk outside by themselves to go inside the school. These represent two major problems. First, we don't know if St. Paul's washrooms are enough to support a larger increment in population as proposed. A second, who is going to go with the students outside to go to the washroom? It is not safe to go outside alone, or even using body systems. Teachers are not supposed to leave the classroom unattended. In cases of a situation with a student, teachers help each other, sometimes standing in the hall and keeping an eye on both classrooms while the student situation is handled. With the portables, this is not going to be possible. Therefore, in the case of an emergency, either the teacher leaves the student to go by himself inside the school, or leave the classroom unattended. Both options are unacceptable. Even if an intercom system is available, it will take longer to address issues. Also, we have heard complaints from teachers at other schools about wildlife and insects nesting at the portables during summer, and raccoon and rodents trying to get refuge during winter. Keeping up with the safety concerns during the recess, it would be harder for teachers to keep an eye on kids as they can hide behind the portables, or even worse, strangers could hide as well. About the community, during the time of the transition, St. John Parish would suffer detachment from its community as they would be physically separated. Also, just because you merge two schools at St. Paul during the transition, it doesn't mean you will have a harmonious and unified community. The uniforms and logos will be different, potentially affecting children and parents who already feel identified and a sense of belonging to their respective schools. St. John's students who are used to walk to school or to travel a very short distance will need to be bused in during this transition. Sensitive children and those reluctant to change might feel lost and left out. These changes could impact students very negatively in their performance and behavior. Another unknown is the impact this transition year will have in the sport teams, clubs, and any other extracurricular activity groups our children are part of. Are they going to keep the same structure as they are now? Are similar clubs and teams to be merged during the transition? Will the team names be kept the same? Keeping teams separate would be fair, because each student here, they're right to belong to each one of them. But at the same time, it could be a very large number of teams to maintain. On the other hand, if the decision is made to merge the team, a large number of children will lose the spot they have worked so hard to obtain. This would affect the team's performance during the transition year as well. We are all aware that the purpose of the Transition Committee will be to address these issues, but the staff should be able to address these concerns in the proposal to a certain degree of detail, and not after an approval is obtained. After all this has been said, and going back to the school trip analogy, I would like to ask the Board of Trustees, would you approve your children to go on such a school trip? I know I wouldn't approve it for my kids.
Do trustees have any questions for clarification of the delegate? Seeing none, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a St. Rayfield parent, parish member, and former St. Rayfield student myself, I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening. Tonight, I will review the issues I feel arise in amalgamating three schools into one mega-school, from the research that supports smaller schools for all stakeholders, the portables, the busing, the extracurricular activity opportunities, the impact on our community, and our real estate values. I have not stopped researching studies about optimal school sizes since this proposal was delivered in January. Call it a gut feeling, or call it mother's instinct, but something tells me that 750 elementary students in one building is asking for problems. And frankly, I have no desire to prepare my littlest one for his transition to high school in his primary years. I found countless studies supporting an optimal school size of 300 to 400, but not one in eight weeks of research that supports 750 students. Students, parents, teachers, and community volunteers in smaller schools reported greater satisfaction because they felt more connected to one another. Studies confirm that small schools achieve better academic results, especially for less affluent students. Given that St. Rayfield ranks first of all 45 Burlington Public and Catholic Elementary Schools in the Fraser Institute rankings, which are largely based on standardized testing, this seems to bear witness. Teachers reported feeling more committed and connected in their work, higher job satisfaction, and a greater sense of responsibility for ongoing student learning. Teachers expected more from their students because they knew them better and cared what happened to them, and students acknowledged this finding. Teachers reported more collaboration with colleagues and more regular professional development at their schools. Teachers had more contact with parents and understood them as an integral part of student success. The greatest factor on student achievement was the reduction of anonymity. Students reported feeling safer, attended school more frequently, and reported being more attached to their schools. Going to a school where people know you and your family name made a difference in student success, as well as reducing the incidence of fighting and violence. This is due to the fact that students took more responsibility for their behavior and the behavior of their classmates because they all knew each other well. This is the most important research to me. Anecdotally, I can tell you from patrolling my 13-year-old son and his city teammates' online social media presence, that St. Rayfield certainly provides a benefit in its small size in the social sense. The boys that attend mega-schools are that much more socially mature and have greater issues with social media getting out of hand. Bigger kids, bigger problems, accented by a bigger school, is a recipe for disaster. I value the small population that allows my kids to stay age-appropriate. Looking at the most recent bullying statistics that state the catastrophic effects on the self-esteem and social lives of 70% of young people, why would we want to add more children into potential bullying situations? Using the lure of more clubs, teams, and programming gives us a false sense that our children will be more involved, satisfied, and successful. I would argue that our St. Rayfield's teams and clubs have always been very successful. My older children have been to the Board Finals in many sports, despite St. Rayfield's being small. Perhaps because we are small, our dedicated coaches take on a few younger ones, the little whippers, to groom along the way, and can keep replenishing their team with experienced players. But what I value most is that they all have a chance to experience team sports. In a school of 750, if 12 players are picked for a volleyball or basketball team, there are certainly 100 kids that didn't get chosen. Studies report in larger schools, there is actually a smaller percentage of students involved in extracurricular activities due to far more competition for the available spots. I have asked a friend who works at a Houghton Catholic Elementary with over 700 students about their extracurricular offerings, and the response was surprising and dismal. There were limited lunchtime clubs this year, and a basketball and a volleyball team. That was it. My intermediate-aged children have played basketball, volleyball, cross-country, track-and-field, softball, and hockey at their small school. As a Catholic high school phys ed teacher, the emphasis of elementary sports teams to me represent a chance to try something new, build leadership skills, and support friends both on and off the court. As a rep parent, I see how competitive the community sports can be, and overwhelming in the time and money demands. Recent studies have shown that the percentage of children involved in community sports has decreased due to rising costs, so it is more important now than ever to offer these kids opportunities to be involved in their school. I've certainly enjoyed the time spent in our little gym, watching kids play sports for the sheer love of the game, and the smile on their faces to be able to play with their best friends for a change, instead of a group of friends spread far across the city in a more stressful environment. I'm not ashamed nor embarrassed to have visiting teams play us in our gym. Maybe it gives them the opportunity, or the life lesson, to learn that great things can come from humble environments, and we don't have to succumb to today's pressures, that everything has to be brand-new and shiny to have value. Our school board has predicted a declining enrollment, creating a proposal that will result in this mega-school being overpopulated for the next decade. If we do not see this forecasted decline, and our neighborhoods turn over as our city councillors predict, then we will have a very overpopulated school well past 2026. Lake Shore Public School has fought closing for many years, and it is now in a situation where they have a waitlist for enrollment. This could very well be our situation. This could very well be our situation. But in the meantime, our children currently in kindergarten face a minimum of 10 years of portable classrooms, their entire elementary career. Portables provide a short-term fix that can lead to chronic problems in the long run. They burden schools with high energy costs and frequent maintenance needs. They expose students and teachers to mold and mildew, poor ventilation, and the potential for volatile gases from cheaper building materials. I know portables present a serious safety concern when my high school goes into lockdown mode, so I can only assume this is the same for the elementary schools. Students and teachers report the learning experience in portables is compromised by poor lighting, erratic temperatures, and noisy heating and air conditioning. The structures often are relegated to soggy fields or parking lots near noise and vehicle exhaust. I can attest, when I deliver a high school credit in a portable, it is dark and dingy, and I have to turn off the heat so my students can hear me speak without the fan drowning out my voice. In wrapping up the hazards of portable use, those assessing portables use carbon dioxide as an indicator of whether enough fresh air passes through a room or if students are breathing germs, allergens, and chemicals that accumulate in stagnant air. All of these trigger asthma, one of the leading causes of both school absences and child hospitalizations. To say we should be leery of building a mega school that may have portables for the foreseeable next generation or two is an understatement at best. The South Burlington proposals leave an eight-kilometer stretch without a Catholic elementary school. This is unacceptable. We live in the dead center of this stretch. This leaves our littlest child, who enjoys riding his bike in the fall and spring, with no alternative but to be the first child picked up by a bus, whichever school he attends. And I'm confident it would be at least a 30-minute bus ride both ways every day. Studies show bus children are less likely to participate in extracurricular activities as they must catch their ride home, have significantly lower physical activity levels, receive less sleep, and score lower on standardized testing. There are numerous provincial mandates that mention walkable schools and communities. Is this just lip service? There are active transportation plans that challenge the ministry and the school boards to create school site planning that incorporates walkability principles and reduce the number of buses required to bus children to school that can save thousands of dollars for school I really struggle with the proposal to strip our church of its two school communities. There are only five Catholic churches in Burlington with schools, and the board is proposing to reduce this to three. This will not be well-received in the public eye as our Catholic Board plays into the hands of those that wish to see Catholic education abolished. This also seems to tear at the very fabric of our school, home, and parish connection. For only one example, as I'm running out of time, St. Rayfield runs the St. Vincent de Paul out of our parish, and removing both schools leaves the critical service without any school donations, crippling the resource. Our community will feel the implications of this proposal in its real estate values and growth going forward. A fourth-generation Burlington Realtor has informed me that this is the worst possible thing that the school board could do right now. Due to the booming market, many of his clients in the Orchard and Alton are interested in selling their homes at $800,000-plus and moving to South Burlington. They wish to have a bit more property and leave the problems their children are currently facing in their overcrowded schools. The first thing they ask this Realtor is, "Show me where Tuck School is. Show me where St. Rayfield School is." Parents use the Fraser Index as a tool to find good schools, and ours is at the top of the pile. If we close our schools and leave an eight-kilometer stretch without a Catholic school option, we are essentially shutting down Catholic families from looking to South Burlington as a housing option. In conclusion tonight, I wish to thank you for your time and urge you to vote no to this current proposal so as to look towards a better solution that solidifies our faith, maintains our communities, and keeps our schools walkable. Let's start again and find a solution that works for our parish and our community. Thank you.
Do trustees have any questions of clarification? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to, you mentioned here, you have a friend who works at a Halton Catholic Elementary with over 700 students, and that they have limited lunchtime clubs and only a basketball and volleyball team. Did she give any, or he give any reasons for that?
We did discuss the fact that, same with the anonymity of the kids, when you get into a bigger school, and I know my high school, the more teachers there are, hate to say it, it's easier to get out the door without being detected. So it just, if you have an older staff that has maybe already put some time in, then they may be at the point in their career where they're not willing to spend as much time, and it's easier for them to be, to go unnoticed.
My name is Oliver Hoover. I've got four kids at St. Rayfield's and five starting next year. In the board's presentation on the perceived need to close St. Rayfield School and amalgamate with St. Patrick on the site of Ascension, the primary emphasis has been placed on money and finance above all else. The board has suggested that now is the time when the school must be closed because it is only now and for a limited time that the Ministry of Education is offering funding to construct a new facility to support amalgamation. While another delegation is speaking on this subject, I would like to draw attention to the serious long-term financial danger posed to Catholic school funding by the potential closures of St. Rayfield and St. Patrick. If these schools close, many parents have stated that the inconvenience of getting their children to the proposed new school will cause them to remove them from the Catholic system and place them in public schools closer to home. We know this anecdotally from speaking to individual parents and from public statements made on the board's Accommodation Review online forum and in editorials printed in The Burlington Post. The loss of students from the Catholic to the public system is not a secret and is a guaranteed outcome of the present closure plan. When these students disappear, the tax funding of their parents will disappear with them. Over time, the loss of this money will have a negative effect on the board's ability to operate the schools that they retain. While it is possible that there might be some short-term savings to be had from the proposed closure of St. Rayfield, these will almost certainly be offset by the long-term bleeding of tax dollars to the public school system. Ten years, counted from JK to grade eight, is not an inconsiderable sum in taxes, and when multiplied, there is a risk of real damage to the board's finances in the future. It is not at all clear from the board's report and presentation to the trustees that the loss of tax dollars from parents removing their children to the public system has been taken into account. A potentially wider-reaching loss of tax funding has almost certainly not been considered. Many parents who will remove their children and the associated tax funding from the Catholic system also have tax-paying parents and other relatives in the Burlington area who do not have children in the schools. Who is to say that these also will not check the public school funding box at tax time out of solidarity with their children or siblings? My father-in-law, who has checked the Catholic school box on his tax forms his entire life, has openly said that he will give his tax dollars to the public system if St. Rayfield closes. He is not likely to be the only one. Furthermore, the generally bad press that the board has received in The Burlington Post for its timing and handling of the public consultation may cause Catholic taxpayers unconnected to the schools under discussion or to parents with children at them to think much more carefully about where they want to send their tax, their school tax dollars. If there is a great exodus of children and their parents' tax dollars to the public system, presumably down the road, the board will be forced to close more Catholic schools and propose further amalgamations. This will in turn lead to the flight of more students and the hemorrhaging of further money from the Catholic system to public schools. It's not difficult to see that, under these circumstances, the Catholic system in Burlington will eventually cease to be viable from the financial point of view and will at last be absorbed completely into the public system. I think that everyone present tonight can see that this is not a good end and falls far short of the call to action made by Paula Dawson, the Director of the Halton Catholic School Board, in a document entitled "168 Years of Success: Ontario's Catholic Schools." There, she tells us, "In recent years, there has been growing discussion around the funding of faith-based education. Despite its longstanding history of academic excellence and contributions to Ontario society, the funding of Catholic education has been drawn into this debate. The 2007 Ontario election campaign was a particular focal point, in some areas reinvigorating the efforts of interest groups that want to end public funding for Catholic schools in Ontario. It is important to be vigilant and to refute these renewed attacks. But the truth is that we really don't need outsiders to attack us. The board's plan under discussion here tonight will establish the climate where we can and will ultimately do it to ourselves." Thank you.
Do the trustees have any questions for clarification of the delegate? Seeing, yes, trustee Quinn.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Perhaps I could get or ask the superintendent and treasurer, Mr. McMahon.
Excuse me, the question is just for the delegate.
But it's a point of clarification that I'll need Mr. McMahon to address. Can you, for the audience here, to show the distinction between voting rights in the Catholic School Board versus taxation so that the delegate is aware of how tax dollars follow the student into the classroom?
Through you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me all right? The funding model changed in 1998. Our funding is determined largely by enrollment. We collect tax dollars from the four municipalities based on ratepayer designations of their home, their property taxes to our board, as well as the commercial property taxes being split based on enrollment. Whatever amount we do not collect from the ratepayers, the province makes up in grand. That's how the formula works.
Thank you, Superintendent McMahon, and thank you for your presentation.
My name is Tammy Luther, and I'm presenting this evening along with two other St. Patrick's parents, Andrea Ricci and Lana Gushen. We are delegating for the Southeast Burlington Modified Accommodation Review. We are also representing tonight with our delegation 20 St. Patrick's families that have come to us and asked us to represent their views on this position as well versus doing their own delegation with you this evening. Four of these families are currently cross-boundary and have chosen to send their children to St. Patrick's over the current Ascension site, and more importantly, continue to want the school to be at the St. Patrick's site even though the proposed site would be closer for them. This is because St. Patrick is the better location for the children. Not only are we representing 20 St. Patrick's families, our presentation also aligns with the feedback given by parents in the internal St. Patrick's survey, which you would have already received, along with the school board's online survey, both of which demonstrated the clear majority preference for the St. Patrick's site. Tonight, we are asking all the trustees to consider the very real health and safety concerns to our children with the proposed Ascension site, and if consolidation is a must, then we ask you to closely consider the St. Patrick's site for the new school. During our presentation, we will cover the significance of traffic volumes, collisions, traffic-related air and noise pollution, along with the importance of safe, active routes to our schools. We will present data points to support why St. Patrick's site is the best location for a new elementary school, and will show creative solutions such as a land exchange with the city of Burlington or consideration for combining only two schools to make the St. Patrick's site a very, very viable option. We want you to vote no to the board's proposed plan and tell the board to go back and come up with better options for our children. I will now turn it over to Andrea to speak about health and safety impacts.
There are approximately 16,000 vehicles passing the Ascension site on a daily basis, 794 of which are heavy trucks. This alarming number is significantly greater than the mere 1,400 vehicles passing St. Patrick, none of which are heavy trucks. This proves why we need to conduct a traffic study and assess the traffic-related health and safety impacts on our children prior to site selection and approval. We've done some of that for you. We need to consider the health and safety impacts of traffic-related air pollution on our children. According to research conducted for Health Canada, roads with average annual daily traffic greater than 15,000 are considered significant local sources of traffic-related air pollution. The same research indicated sufficient evidence for a causal relationship between exposure to traffic-related air pollution and worsening of asthma and onset of childhood asthma. So why would we select a site that exposes our children to these risks when there's another choice? Furthermore, the Ascension site is too close to New Street. Schools and daycare should be set back 150 meters or 500 feet from busy roads. The new school would need to start at the back tree line in that picture to meet the appropriate setback, and as you can tell, that's not possible. In addition to air pollution, we need to consider noise pollution. Even with the best quality building materials, you can't mitigate all indoor and outdoor exposures. Studies have linked exposure to traffic-generated air and noise pollution with a wide range of adverse health effects in children. Chronic exposure to traffic noise among children has been linked with increased blood pressure, reduced leak quality, and cognitive deficits. Children spend a large portion of time at school. We need to conduct a noise study and understand the health and safety impacts on our children prior to site selection and approval. We just covered air and noise pollution exposures at the proposed site. Let's talk about collisions. According to the Public Health Agency of Canada, motor vehicle traffic collisions are the leading cause of death among children. So we wanted to understand the collision numbers at both Ascension and St. Patrick's sites. Within the same time period, New Street between Appleby and Burloke has had 577 collisions, whereas Kenwood has only had 33. Kenwood is where St. Patrick's is. To put this in perspective, Kenwood has had less collisions in 15 years than New Street has had in one, just between Appleby and Burloke. So this leads us to safe and active routes to school. The current plan does not promote safe and active travel routes to school. So many children will be bused, and for those that are not, including all of St. Patrick, the infrastructure in the city does not support... the infrastructure in the city does not support safe and active travel. In addition to the traffic-related issues we’ve raised here, there are no stop signs, one crosswalk across four lanes, and not enough traffic lights on New Street in close proximity to the proposed site. Also, many streets en route do not have sidewalks for long distances. We need to assess school travel plans and infrastructure-related health and safety impacts prior to site selection and approval. So let’s recap both sites. Consider the St. Patrick’s site, 200 Kenwood Avenue. The St. Patrick’s site is next to St. Patrick Church, Mohawk Park, and across Skyway Park. There is a low average annual daily traffic number, a low speed limit, low number of collisions in close proximity to the school. It’s a two-lane roadway less than a kilometer long with always stop signs at the entrance. There is a bus loop and there are no site limitations. In contrast, at 5205 New Street where the Ascension site is, that site is not next to a Catholic church, it’s on a four-lane major roadway spanning Burlington and Oakville. It goes downtown to downtown in both cities. There’s a high average annual daily traffic of 15,881. It’s a heavy truck route and exposes our children to traffic-related air and noise pollution. There are a high number of collisions in close proximity to the school, a 60-kilometer speed limit unless the light is flashing, there are no always stop signs at the entrance. Given this information, why wouldn’t we want to make the St. Patrick’s site work for our children? So we’re asking the school board to be creative. Make the St. Patrick’s site work. Our suggestion is to close Ascension, do a land swap with the city of Burlington for part or all of Mohawk Park, which is 7.2 acres. This is at zero cost to the school board and a quicker and easier process than disposal. We’ve discussed the land swap option with our Ward Five councillor, Paul Sharman, who was supportive of the option and is here tonight presenting later this evening. A land swap has also been done before. For example, in 2010, between the Halton District School Board and the city of Burlington with respect to the Palmer site, where city and board properties were exchanged. Consider another option as well. Combine two schools in the southeast versus three. Combine Ascension with St. Patrick’s and rebuild or renovate on the St. Patrick’s site. Create a school for 500-plus students that will not require the same footprint as the planned 648-pupil school. This total meets the board’s stated optimal school capacity of 500 to 671 spaces. This also avoids the need for portables. We’re asking you to build up. Consider building up. St. Patrick’s footprint on one floor today fits 337. Here are pictures of St. Patrick’s site and adjacent Mohawk Park. There are many planned developments in this area such as Mohawk Park, Skyway Arena and Park, Burloke Waterfront Park, Lakeside Plaza redevelopment. This is where we should have a new school, not be closing our school. Thank you, and I’ll now turn it back to Tammy and Lana to close out the presentation.
Our presentation shows that more work needs to be done. Vote no to the current plan and pick the St. Patrick’s site. We are asking you trustees to exercise your responsibility and look after your community and the health and safety of our children. We want parent, we, we parents, want the school board held accountable for the incomplete staff work like proposing a site without conducting studies to evaluate the health and safety of the location. For only providing one option and making it a modified process, out of Peel, York, and Halton Catholic School Boards, Halton is going through the shortest process of all three. We feel the school board showed a lack of integrity by submitting this current plan to the Ministry for Funding, already assuming that they had the trustees’ approval and that they would have the community’s support. They do not. The board needs to rethink the approach and conduct these assessments prior to choosing a site and asking for your approval. We researched these data points because we thought you had a right to make an informed decision. When we know better, we do better. Do you have all the information that you need to make an informed decision that will not only impact our children but thousands of children that will attend this school in the next 50 to 60 years? I now turn it over to Lana for questions. Thank you.
This concludes our presentation. The school board trustees were also provided with a supplement in the package as shown on the slide above, and now we’re open for questions.
Are there any questions of the trustees for the delegation? No? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irene Vauer. I am a parent of two children currently attending St. Joseph’s. I also have the support of a lot of my neighbours who back onto the St. Joseph’s site, who have felt completely left out of the process. When we visited the street a couple of days before the community consultation, no one was aware that there is a planned community consultation, no letters have been received, and generally the neighbourhood feels that their feedback has not been heard. However, and although in principle I’m opposed to closure of schools for pure monetary considerations because I have not heard any proposed educational value add to the kids either currently or about to enter the school system, my presentation today is on two very specific, very concrete modifications that I would like to bring to your attention and propose. And I think the broader community is generally, unlike my student council, who apparently have a different perspective on the level of support in the school community as well as in the neighbourhood, I feel that there are a significant number of people who feel that the proposals have been logically inconsistent, rushed through the system, and the community feedback has been compromised on a number of levels. The survey was timed out when people were requested to submit it. Communication and the transparency of the consultation process has not been consistent. But with that being out of my system, so to speak, I’ll just focus on the two concrete proposals to improve the proposal for the new South school. I seem to have an issue with moving the slides forward. In the interest of time, I’ll just speak to it for the time being. One has to deal with access, neighbourhood kids’ access to walk and bike to school. Currently, there is the only access to the school outside of the main entrance through Westminster is the, is the access through the Wood Place Street, and it’s a pathway. It’s a, it’s a pathway, it’s a walkway that kids use to either walk or bike to school. It’s commonly used by all of the neighbourhood that is south and southeast of the school. Your own guidelines suggest that there should be walkable pathways, that kids need, that you encourage active transportation, that you are in support of safe access and the separation of vehicular traffic, and walkable and bikeable access to the school. And it seems like I’m back online. The second point that I want to bring to your attention is that I don’t believe your forecasts around decline in enrollment are, are objective. I think there is a bit of self-serving approach to, to forecasting decline in enrollment in order to justify the consolidation. And the way I will demonstrate this to you is by using hopefully some of the data that you are familiar with, where very often your own forecast falls short of the actual enrollment in the schools. So on the first point around safe access to school, very quickly, your own guidelines about design of school sites says that you need to ensure pedestrians are separated from vehicular traffic and similarly for cyclists. Currently, dozens of kids use through bad weather and good, but year-round use the walkway through Wood Place to access the school site, and your proposal includes the, includes a very large parking lot, which is actually quite funny relative to the size of the parking lot proposed in some of the other schools. Of course, 504 spots proposed schools, your proposal includes 125 parking spots that cut across the walkway. This is the only other access except the main Westminster access to the school, and there is a general concern because 21% of fatalities, pedestrian fatalities, actually occur around parking spots and in parking lots, and the number is even higher for children. Many kids get tremendous satisfaction and sense of independence in being able to walk to school independently without the constant nervousness, hand-holding, and supervision of either their parents or caregivers. If you look at the proposed plan, right now the kindergarten play area is neighbouring to a parking lot. The parking lot cuts across the walkway and is taking a significant amount of the currently outside play space for the children. So if we eliminate the need for the parking lot, which is Area B, of cutting across the walkway coming from the south, there would be a significant amount of space just west and, west of the school and west of the walkway to accommodate parking needs even for the new proposed sized school. Similarly, you can also move the kindergarten play area to be closer to the big kids’ play area for, even if it’s just for their own satisfaction, but it also removes them from proximity to the parking spots, the exhaust, the smoke, and you know, the general, there is no need to mix kids in both, both the kindergarten age group and in the elementary school area and mix vehicular traffic, parking lots, and play areas in the same area. And if required to create that many spots for whatever reason, the school footprint can always be shifted to the east. What that would give is safe alternative, clear separation of play areas and parking areas, a larger play area to the east of the school, and you know, it seems to be very much in line with your own active and safe routes to school program, the link to which has been removed from your side because based on your own lessons learned in your final report around active and safe routes to school, it is recommended that that program does not get promoted in communities that are undergoing a school review to not incite, you know, negative feedback to your proposals. Moving to my next point around enrollment projections. I’m not, you know, my perspective is actually rather informed. My educational background is in operations research, which has to deal with optimization of complex problems. My professional background is in the delivery and most recently review for value assurance of large projects. Currently, I’m reviewing over 300 million of large projects for a large institution. Now, what is accepted, well-understood by everybody with common sense is that projections are somebody’s informed or less informed opinion of what the future would look like. But what is a fact is how your previous projections have materialized relative to actual enrollment. So if we say, “We used to have a projection, now we know what the actual numbers are, how accurate are our numbers?” And historically, what we can see is that you have been more inclined to under-forecast enrollment than over-forecasting enrollment. We see that at the board level, we also see that when it comes to St. Joseph’s school. St. Joseph’s school, the community around St. Joseph’s has generally been desensitised a little bit because over decades and decades, there has been conversation around closures and decline in enrollment. Since my kids started school there, in the past six years, we have never had a year without portables, and the school is currently at 130% capacity. And from a micro level, on Wood Place, while the enrollment used to be two to four kids, in the next couple of years, it will go somewhere between five and 10. So I don’t have significant confidence that all of a sudden, when you have the monetary incentive to project decline in enrollment, all of a sudden your projections will be more accurate than they historically have been. So here’s what I’m proposing. At the minimum, it is a bit disingenuous to put kids through the disruptive process of transition and expect that some of them during the transition and upon return into the new school will, should, should be in portables. I don’t think that’s a valuable experience to anybody. I don’t think it’s reasonable in one of the wealthiest communities in Ontario to permanently stick kids in portables. It’s just not fair. So the likelihood of your enrollment projections underestimating actual enrollment is very high. What you can do by, you know, by making a simple assumption, and I’ll give you an example. During the transition period for St. Dominic’s, you would be asking St. Dominic’s parents to transport their kids to the St. Joseph, St. James site. The St. Joseph brand-new school will be at half the distance. There would be, it would be highly logical for any parent who is enrolling their kid for the first time in JKSK or who plans to eventually move their kid from St. Dominic’s into St. Joseph for the Grade Five French immersion, to not consider enrolling their kid at the St. Joseph’s school as opposed to the St. Dominic’s school.
Thank you very much.
All I’m trying to say is 550 to 575.
The time has stopped now.
Would be a more reasonable sized school.
Thank you. Do any of the trustees have questions of this delegate? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would ask for the light to be lowered so you can see this, but I guess it’s visible. My name is Rocco DeVito. I’m here on behalf of the St. Rayfield’s Parish Pastoral Council. I have been a member of the St. Rayfield’s School Council for 24 years as my four daughters attended the school. I am an active member of the, of many church and school-based communities. I am here to offer an alternative proposal to one presented to us. Many people of the school and church community have rejected, have reacted negatively to the proposal. If refuting the proposal was my sole purpose, I would be like a rebel without a cause. Therefore, my cause will be to offer you an alternative proposal. I have named my proposal after, oh, lost my place. Okay, I’ve named my proposal after the proposal that upset so many of the Burlington South Christian-Catholic community. I named it “The Modified Pupil Accommodation Review for South Burlington: An Alternative Enrollment is declining. What does this mean for your school? Declining student enrollment is like the weather. Even though temperatures rise and fall, but the overall drop is minimal in respect to the whole picture. Our communities will undergo many changes, but ultimately the population will turn around and the, the empty nesters will downsize and new families will relocate in the area. In our end of the woods, the 24 homes, two have preschoolers, 14 have school-aged children from elementary, high school to university, four have adult children living at home, and the rest are near the point of selling and downsizing. In the last 10 years, 14 of the homes have changed owners. I realize, I realize- I realize this is only a fragment of the population, but others have voiced the same opinions about their areas. It is also a popular belief by city councillors. The declining enrollment will not be as drastic as predicted by the report given to us. Student enrollment has declined, but programs in South Burlington have not suffered. It is the will of the dedicated teachers who volunteer their time to provide the specialized program and extracurricular activities. That's what keeps the programs running, as most teachers know, as myself. Numbers may not warrant keeping all five schools, but three schools that are attached to the churches could provide us with a solution that will be less disruptive and less costly. A window of opportunity is how we've been held hostage. We have been told a limited offer with limited funding. A proposed solution. Right here, we have a picture of the boundaries as they sit now for the schools in South Burlington. As you can see, they are very asymmetrical. Here are the schools, obviously taken from the report that we already were given. Proposed solution: Replacing the existing St. Rayfield School with a new 700-pupil-placed elementary school with daycare on the existing site for the 2017-2018 school year. And renovate St. Patrick's School instead of St. John's School, working with the region of Halton for an 88-place childcare center. Close both St. Paul's and Ascension of Our Lord's Schools. Redirect all existing board programs offered at St. Paul's and St. Rayfield Schools to the new Burlington School at St. Rayfield location. The Ascension School attendance be located according to the new boundary of Appleby Line to either the new school at St. Rayfield or the renovated school at St. Patrick's site. Relocate the Burlington Thomas Merton Adult Learning Center into the existing St. Paul's School facility. Disposition of the Ascension of Our Lord's site with proceeds of the sales to be directed to the Board's reserve for future projects. I have been told that Ascension could be sold for $10,575,000. St. Rayfield's not so much. Keep St. John's attendance boundaries. Proposed site. Advantages to locating at St. Rayfield's site: Three schools are located near churches and are bound by natural boundaries of Burl Oak, Appleby Line, Guelph Line, and the QEW. What will occur? All students enrolled at St. Rayfield will be relocated at St. Paul's until reconstruction of the new school is completed with portable classrooms required. Placing students in classes their future schools with keeping their future schools in mind, keeping those school kids together. All students enrolled at St. Patrick's will be relocated at Ascension of Our Lord's School until the construction of St. Patrick's addition is completed with possible portable classrooms required. Again, placing students in classes with their future school in mind. Upon completion of the new school and reconstructing, reconstructed school students will be relocated to their new schools according to the new boundaries. Why this approach? Reasons for the proposals are all down here, but I'm going slide by slide, so you don't have to read all these right now. The first one. Schools, St. Rayfield's School is located next to a church. This ultimately should be the only reason we need. Number two, St. Rayfield's a center located in the triad of three churches and has the largest congregation of South Burlington. Except for the proposed plan, other plans will fit nicely on St. Rayfield's School property, and there's an example of it right there, with the daycare and plenty of everything else around it. Traffic on New Street at the St. Rayfield location is safest since there is five traffic lights in a row from Walker's Line to Nelson in the distance of less than 1 km. But the proposed site, there is one light past Fortino's and one light at the Smokers' Corner at the high school and one way down Hampton Heath. A nice-long drag race corridor, which is a distance of over 1 km, and no traffic lights where the new school is proposed. Here we have an example of our kiss-and-ride, safer and longer. An additional kiss-and-ride for the FDK and for the daycare. Here we have an example of a tree-covered FDK daycare play area. There we go. And here, a large tarmac area for recess, and these two strathcona parks have mature trees for shade and a very, very, very large play area. Say other things to think about. A new school for Central Burlington was originally, which was originally our flagship school in this area over 50 years ago, but maybe not flamboyant, over-designed school as proposed, but one that would suit the needs of our regular Catholic people with their priorities in the right Christian place. Modern facilities for a modern community, sell the property to St. Rayfield's, and St. Rayfield's Church will have no parking. There would not be an adequate parking for Sunday masses. Imagine what would happen at Christmas and Easter. Even the plaza wouldn't hold the people there. Only school with its own road. Long War actually goes right around the church and supplies a nice, quiet road for buses and all the kiss-and-ride program. Here is the floor plan. Large gym, classrooms, plus five FDK classes, four intermediate classes, six special services rooms. Here is the layout of the second floor. And now I'll go through, I'll take you for a tour... Oh, by the way, more school and church parking. 50% more with this plan than there is now. So as I go through this, you can have a tour of the new school. Proposed design of new St. Rayfield School. Since the decline may not be as drastic as predicted, three school proposals will allow for three schools adjacent to three churches to remain open. When we are realistic about the numbers, we can sustain all three schools, as does the original plan. We are still only building one school and renovating another, but less costly and more modest. These three remaining schools are equal distance from each other. With the elimination of the board proposal, we can start a new process with input from the community. We need to start with new boundary changes that fit the geographic makeup of our community. Three churches, three natural boundaries, three school zones. Enrollment will not decline as predicted, but decline they have. So the three-school proposal and closure of two schools must be considered. When you drastically change the school zones as the board proposal does, a mass exodus of our Catholic students will occur because of the unrealistic distances children will travel. This will cause a drop in enrollment in our Catholic schools and ultimately in the Catholic community itself. Catholics will not move into an area that has limited Catholic schools. Other Catholic parents will opt out for closer, non-Catholic schools than travel great distances to a new, modern school. Our proposed mega-school will have distances by the main compass point of up to 2 km from the south, 2 and 1/2 km from the north, and 3 km from the west. And finally, my area that I come from, I would have to walk 3 and 1/4 km just to get to a Catholic school. From St. John's School, it would be as far as 3 and 1/2 km to the furthest location by your proposal. With a three-school modified proposal, St. Patrick's would be by the compass points, 800 meters east, 2 km north, 1 km west, 500 meters south. St. Rayfield's would be by the compass point, 500 meters south, 2 km west, 2 km north, and 1 km 500 meters east. St. John's would be by the compass point, 1 km south, 800 km in each of the other three directions. This means traveling less than 2 km in the three-school proposal. Or would you rather have to travel up to 3 and 1/2 km with the two-school proposal?
Thank you very much. Your time has come up.
Can I just finish? It's just 3 and 1/2 km. The distance for 3 and 1/2 km is the distance from St. Paul's to Ascension. Okay? Would any of the board members want to walk that every day? At the end here, I have your proposal for St. Pat's. St. Pat's needs a double gym, and my last line is, "We hope you now heed the masses." Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew it would be tough.
Any questions for Mr. DeVito from the trustees? No, thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair and trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to delegate to you this evening. I'm going to be speaking on a few areas of concern for myself as a parent of St. Rayfield's. I have a son in grade four. The couple of areas of concern briefly are the timelines throughout this process and what appears to be a relative apparent disregard for the general community feedback, specifically in the Burlington Southeast review, generally, I think, in both Burlington reviews. So I'll start with a question that I posed to you in an email a while ago. I've modified it slightly for this evening, but the question is, is it better to rush this proposal through without collaborative community consultation and analysis, only to end up with a solution that satisfies very few, or take the time necessary to work collaboratively with each community to arrive at the solution which best fits that community's needs? So I'll start with the timeline, and granted, it's from the perspective of myself as a parent, so please bear that in mind, but I'm going to start with June 2013 as the start of this process, which was not till the exact date, but approximately the time that the school board approved its current long-term capital plan. In that plan, as you're all aware, four areas were highlighted as requiring review, and those are the four areas that are currently undergoing AMPAR processes. In March of 2014, approximately 300 days later, the Ontario Ministry of Education announced an increase of approximately $750 million in funding, funding that was specifically going to be used for school boards for realizing efficiencies and modernization. November 10, 2015, approximately 900 days after the beginning of this process, this board approved Operating Policy I-09, which amended or replaced Operating Policy I-9, and in effect codified the AMPAR process. It also removed references to guiding principles previously found in Policy I-9, which, among other things, stated, "The board acknowledges and accepts that Catholic school serves as a center for the local Catholic community and supports church activities in the local parish. A school adjacent to a church represents by its proximity the close relationship that should exist between the local parish and all of the schools within the parish." And finally, the board endorses a process for considering the consolidation of schools that includes opportunities for community consultation and participation. December 16, now I apologize for the typo. My crack editing staff missed this one, but not December 16, 2016, but December 16, 2015, again, a little under 930 days approximately from the start of this process, the Ontario Ministry of Education sent School Boards Memo 2015-B16, which outlined the criteria under which school boards could apply for school consolidation capital projects. I think everyone's familiar with the three options that school boards can consider when applying for funding under this process. It also outlined a timeline for boards to submit proposals under this process. And I think the important date here is that all school boards must have a final trustee vote by March 28, 2016 to be considered for SCC funding approval. School boards are required to submit their business cases by February 29. I understand that happened, but I do know, it's the fact that we're sitting here and a vote has not occurred yet, that this board at least will not make the March 28 deadline for submitting board-approved funding proposals. January 19 of this year, the school board received its first four initial proposals from staff and initiated the AMPAR process in each of the four affected areas throughout the board. January 21, an article first appeared in the Burlington Post approximately 965 days after the start of this process, and I've clipped three quotes from that article. Trustee Ian Tomasi was quoted as saying, "Until extensive community feedback is received and processed, no decision will be made." Trustee Danko was also quoted as saying, "Ratepayers will need to let us know their thoughts on this, and if the proposal is approved, we will need to make a stronger effort to maintain the home-school-parish partnership." And finally, one downside is that we lose three schools that are adjacent to churches. March 2, 2016, a little over 1,000 days after this process started, Burlington Southeast community had its first and only public community meeting as part of the AMPAR process. There were no opportunities at that meeting for public question and answering of staff or trustees, and the community was limited at that meeting to providing feedback on three set answered questions, the same three questions which were made available through the online survey, and there was a parking lot process of chart paper on the walls to provide general comments. March 22, a couple of weeks ago, you as a board received the final staff reports and recommendations for each of the four processes. Included in the Burlington Southeast report are 176 pages of feedback from members of the community, feedback that was from both the online forum, the online survey, and the one public meeting that we had. Of the 17 pages in very small font, of the feedback from the public meeting excluding the parking lot feedback, 14 of those pages related to answering questions two and three, which I've outlined there. It was basically the two questions that didn't say, "What do you like about this proposal?" In reviewing the final board proposal or final staff proposal, there is virtually no substantive changes from the original report that was received in January. March 28, as noted earlier, still over 1,000 days from the beginning of this process, that was the final day that school boards had to send board-approved proposals to the Ministry of Education under the SCC funding proposals. We missed that deadline. That was made apparent publicly by staff at the March 26 board meeting, and they acknowledged that they were aware of this fact prior to that point. This is a clip of a page that you received in January when you received your first proposals under the four AMPAR processes. I'll highlight the bottom highlighted area. "All projects contemplated hereafter, if approved, are entirely contingent on Ministry SCC funding approvals. In the event that the project is not funded, the implementation strategy will not be implemented." So I'm asking you to consider the following. If a stated goal of the trustees of this board is to receive extensive community feedback on the AMPAR process, and a previous guiding principle of school closures was to endorse a process that includes community consultation and participation, why did it take over 1,000 days from the release of the initial long-term capital plan for the first community meeting to occur? The board was aware that our area was under review and likely something was going to need to happen. Why did it take 1,000 days approximately for the first public community consultation to occur? We have an AMPAR process and previously AMPAR process, I understand that, but surely common sense would prevail when you're looking at closing schools, especially schools attached to churches, and two schools in one area alone, that you would involve the community long before needing to trigger an AMPAR process? Why do we... Policies are in place for a reason, I appreciate that, but common sense also has to prevail. You're not... The decision to close a school is not something that should be taken lightly, and it should involve as many stakeholders as possible throughout the process, not at the end of In saying that also, we went through a process of providing community feedback, and you received a lot of it. How could staff possibly have the time in the two weeks or 20 days approximately from the time that we provided our feedback in our Southeast process to when their final report came out? How can you possibly expect staff, let alone yourselves, to review, improperly digest, and engage with the people who provide that feedback to have it integrated into any future If the board staff was aware that the deadline for submitting trustee-approved business cases to the ministry would not be met, why... why did the process continue under the guise of it being made for submissions to SCC funding? Staff knew you could not meet that deadline. Why was it projected to the public as being for that purpose? And if per the funding slide earlier presented to the board, it states, "All projects contemplated hereafter, if approved, are entirely contingent upon ministry SCC funding approvals. In the event that the project is not funded, the implementation strategy will not be implemented." Why is the board still considering this proposal? If it was done under the SCC funding model, a model in a pool which you will not be able to utilise for this review, why are we still looking at it? So I ask tonight for you to vote no in two weeks when the Burlington Southeast AMPAR proposal motion comes to your meeting. I ask you to vote no and instead direct staff to take the next year to engage and involve a local community, which, as you can see by this evening in the previous meetings and feedback, you've got a pretty engaged community right now. And there are some interesting suggestions and proposals that are coming out of it. It might have been nice to have those suggestions and proposals in front of staff three years ago. If that had happened, you might have been able to make your deadline for March 28th to get at the SCC funding. In my professional life, I'm an accountant. I was Chair of the Board for the Certified General Accountants of Ontario a number of years ago, and one of our marketing slogans was, "We see more than numbers." And what I'm asking you to do this evening is to see beyond the numbers. Look at the communities and the impact that it might have in closing schools and schools attached to churches, and vote no.
Thank you, Ruth. Do the trustees have any questions for clarification? No, thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, dear trustees and board members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jeanne Vono. I'm a proud parent of three students at St. Paul Catholic Elementary School. My colleague Becky Nailed and I are here today on behalf of the St. Paul community to express our concerns with respect to the differences of smaller compared to larger schools, the benefits of green space on student achievement, as well as the physical and psychological impact on the students as well as the community. Included in your packages are links that you can reference, some case studies, literature from Health Canada, and also an article that was posted in our local paper. So we ask, "Why cut the roots of a fruitful tree?" We feel that it's a matter of logic. In this case, bigger isn't better. There's something to be said for the iconic 19th century one-room schoolhouse. Good teachings come from the heart and the mind, and bells and whistles hold no value on the fundamentals of learning. Study after study confirms instructional quality and academic success is higher in smaller schools. Small schools provide opportunity to participate. As discussed before, there is less competition for a few coveted spots on a sports team. From a cognitive standpoint, teachers are able to get deeper into a curriculum and move through it at a faster pace. This is much easier for teachers to maintain the bell curve in smaller schools where students' needs are easily identified. It becomes difficult for children to go unnoticed and slip through the proverbial cracks. Smaller schools create a greater sense of unity, they build strong communities, and parents and neighbours are more likely to be actively involved. The students benefit from community support, and the school in turn fosters connections amongst neighbours and encourages civic participation. We ask you to promote student achievement by keeping our well-functioning school open. Then there's the matter of switching schools. As indicated by a study performed by the McMaster University, there's a direct correlation between student achievement and switching schools. Children who switch schools between kindergarten and grade three don't do as well on Ontario standardised tests. The province's own data from the EQAO shows that switching schools lowers math levels by over 10%, reading at 9%, and 6% for writing. Switching schools also creates instability and disrupts learning. Researchers refer to this as the "move effect," and it does affect performance. Children, especially in the primary grades, who switch schools need to have particular attention paid to their needs. We ask, "How will particular attention be applied to over 500 students who will have been redirected as a result of this proposal going forward, particularly the St. John's students who will be redirected twice?" It's a very big risk to take with such a large population, and how can we in good faith expose our children to this educational harm? At this time, I'll pass you on to Becky, who will discuss the mental health impacts regarding this proposal.
Okay, so symptoms of mental health, for the all intents and purposes of this presentation, I'm also going to just touch upon right now the developmental delays and learning disabilities that we do see, particularly the increase in the rise that we've seen over the last few years. So symptoms of mental health, developmental delays, learning disabilities, they generally occur throughout a child's elementary years. This often results in schools being the first place where these children receive support and become identified. The Halton Catholic District School Board has recognised this dramatic increase in children struggling with anxiety, depression, ADHD, and developmental disabilities, and have implemented their mental health and addiction strategy. Throughout this strategy, it highlights the importance of a child's connection to their school, community, and self, which is clearly something that St. Paul's does incredibly well. In a small school, trust is quicker to develop, and educators, administrative staff, volunteers are better able to identify these symptoms of anxiety, depression, and learning needs much easier, therefore implementing more efficient and well-rounded individualised education plans, behaviour modification plans, and social work supports. As we see more children struggling with anxiety and depression, sending them to larger schools will hinder them from getting the help they actually need. To add to this, bullying and aggression rates are significantly higher in larger schools, which a few of the presentations have touched upon earlier. Several studies have shown that it is easier for both the bullies, who also need the help and support, and the victims to fall through the cracks, thus leading to a snowball effect that generally escalates into a much more complex mental health issues into their adolescence and adult years. This consolidation plan completely contradicts the ongoing mental health and addiction strategy that the school board and the ministry and education has spent many hours working hard on developing and implementing. I'm going to pass it back.
Let's talk a little bit about active travel, okay? So the Halton region has initiated an active transportation master plan. Its objective is to promote non-motorised travel throughout the region. It's entitled "Road to Change," and you can refer to it in your package. By active travel, we maintain a healthy body weight and reduce chronic disease and health concerns, for example cardiovascular fitness. Encouraging travel actively at an early age will provide our children with lifelong benefits. For example, children who are active in their travel are more confident, navigation and local environment awareness are more prevalent, and risk assessment and decision-making is also a benefit. By busing our total population, we are not allowing children to exercise these rights, and this master plan should be taken into consideration with decisions affecting these concerns. You can also note the article that was posted in our local paper entitled, "Be Active or Else." It says, "It's not rock and science. Active travel encourages good health, reduces fuel costs and pollutants, and relieves community congestion." The epidemic of child obesity is rising globally, and societal trends have dramatically altered the nature of play and the way that children interact with the environment. These trends have significantly reduced the amount of playtime that children have outside, and there's an increased dependence on social media and sedentary activities. You can refer to the article, or study rather, entitled, "The Distance to School is Associated with Sedentary Time." By providing families with a walkable community, we would ensure that the community is given the opportunity to contribute daily to the efforts of a healthier lifestyle. Everywhere we look, it points in the same direction. Physical activity is a growing concern, and by busing nearly our total population, we are increasing the risk of these potential health concerns. Sense of belonging. It's a known fact that children want to feel engaged at school. Small schools foster a family atmosphere that is... and close links with their community. There's a stronger sense of belonging and self-concept in smaller schools, as well as objective measures such as attendance and future dropout rates. So now that we can appreciate the benefits of smaller schools, some may still argue that it's cost-prohibitive. Dollars and cents summarises research on educational and social benefits on small schools and the negative effects of larger schools on students, teachers, and the members of the community. The research, sorry, shows that by measuring the cost of education by graduates rather than students that are simply going through the system, that small schools are the wise investment, and small schools are cost-effective. Invest in what works and keep our schools open. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about green space. The proposed site for consolidation does not meet the developmental criteria and presents concerns to the psychological benefits as it lacks green space. As a study done by researchers in Spain, and I've attached that in your package, the study provides evidence that proves that exposure to green living leads to improved performance on attention-demanding cognitive tasks, sorry. Multiple benefits were found for children that went to schools that featured green spaces and natural scenery. Children exposed to more greenery, as measured by satellite imagery from their schools, showed not only better attention, but also superior working memory. And you can look at the details provided by that study, but an interesting quote that was in there was that "The fact of the lack of green space at home didn't seem to matter. Rather, it was the greenness of the commute, and especially the greenness at school that made the difference." As children spend a considerable part of their daily time at schools, and green exercise is directly related to mental health, therefore positive mental health is capital. It has a lasting effect throughout the course of life. Researchers also found lower levels of traffic-related carbon levels inside schools that were surrounded by more green space. In summary, when we are deprived of greenery, it is harmful to our psyches, and on this basis, contact with nature is a human need. The St. Paul community feels that this is a right that's being taken away from us. By having 500-plus students sharing minimal green space on a proposed property and forcing our children on buses, we are putting them at risk by severely limiting their exposure to the world, to green world. It is our obligation to ensure green living environments are factored into our children's education. This proposal does not optimise these conditions. The southwest community senses abandonment. We don't feel that the impact on our families and community, and particularly the children, have been considered. There is no direct benefit to our children. The proposal lacks research and quality, and is based on too many uncertainties and mostly on equity. As parents, educators, and decision-makers, it is our responsibility to identify the needs of our children and communities that result in practical education options that continue to serve long-term. At the end of the day, we are our children's advocates, and we're here to represent their helpless voices. It's our duty as residents of the city of Burlington to protect our heritage, promote walkable communities, and encourage green living. In preparation for this delegation, I was advised to leave out any emotional points as they would hold no value argumentatively. May I finish? Although that is a valid point, I disagree when we're talking about the psychology of our children. And in closing, I have a few other points, but I'll just leave it at this. I ask that we reflect on the vision and mission statements of the Halton Catholic District School Board. Remember the whole child and create conditions that support the spiritual, intellectual, physical, and emotional wellbeing of all students so that they may fulfil their God-given potential. The St. Paul community prays that the decision on this proposal is based on truths and keeping in good faith the best interests of the community.
Any questions from the trustees? Thank you very much.
My name is Maria Lorenko. I'm a graduate of the Halton Catholic District School Board, as well as a parent and aunt to students currently attending four of our schools, including St. John's and St. Rayfield. I'm an active volunteer, a former member of two parent councils, and a current member of the board's Special Education Advisory Committee. I care about our students and our schools. I see a lot of flaws in the South Burlington proposals, particularly when combined. Many of these have already been brought to your attention. I'm representing a group you haven't heard from, despite significant and negative implications that they will face. You haven't heard from them because there hasn't been a genuine or authentic effort to inform them, nor to engage them in the process. There are, of course, many stakeholders who feel this way, but I'm referring to the neighbouring residents to St. John's school, who have no idea what the board is planning to do to their neighbourhood. My mother is one of several neighbours who has lived there for over 40 years. If she didn't have grandchildren at St. John's, she would have no idea that the board was planning to increase the traffic congestion around her home and turn the road outside her front door into a school bus lane. My mother has always valued her home as a quiet, peaceful, and private space, and I hope that she'll be able to continue to enjoy her golden years in that environment. The board did in fact hand-deliver letters to these residents at the end of January, although the extent of the delivery area is unclear. The letters did nothing to explain what was going on or to motivate residents to become involved. A copy of what the residents received is in your package. Inside the envelope, addressed to St. John B., in itself confusing, was a cover letter and the same two-page FAQ sheet that was sent electronically to parents. The terms pupil or school, accommodation, or variations thereof are used a total of 13 times, but never explained. Even in the section entitled, "What is a Modified Review Process?", the question isn't answered. The board explains that it's revised its policies and procedures, refers to the existence of ministry guidelines without elaborating on them, and points out the difference between a modified and regular review process, but never defines either. At the March 22nd board meeting, it was acknowledged that the terminology was confusing to parents, such that the board had made efforts to increase clarity by referring instead to school consolidations and closures in later communications. Unfortunately, no such clarification was provided to the neighbours. The documentation talks about the beginning of a review process, states in bold twice that "no determination has been made regarding school consolidations or closures," and states again twice in bold that "before the board makes any decisions, a comprehensive community consultation will take place." The documentation states that "the board is undertaking the review to address the delivery of specialised programmes and extracurricular activities in the face of declining enrolment." The only statement regarding school consolidations or closures is in the negative. It sounds like the board is at the preliminary stages of a lengthy and comprehensive process. Nothing to indicate a final decision in April or that changes could be underway as early as September. Definitely nothing to suggest that the one and only option being considered and presented was in fact a school closure and consolidation. Most concerning in the case of neighbours, there was absolutely no way they could have anticipated from these documents that this modified pupil accommodation review process would mean traffic chaos and a school bus lane would soon be descending just outside their front doors. The scenario is not unlike what we faced as parents. I didn't know what a pupil accommodation review was, and I didn't give it much thought at first either. The difference is, these... The difference is, these neighbors don't have children in the school and aren't directly connected to the school community, and therefore not part of the ongoing discussion. Sure, they were invited to the March 8 meeting, but what would compel them to attend? The residents received no additional communication from the Board. The Board will say that the documents provided references to additional information and a dedicated webpage where updates would be available. While this might be an even more concerning aspect of these letters that were hand-delivered to the elderly neighbors, the letters contained a number of hyperlinks. In some cases, they provided URL addresses, which isn't much use to a 70- or 90-year-old who's not internet conversant. Readers were also invited to view the policy and procedure documents, but were only given the titles of the reports. I know from the electronic version that these are hyperlinks. The best part, though, is where it says "Click here to read the full report." As we all know, nothing happens when you click on a piece of paper. It's not like the Board doesn't know the demographic of this maturing neighborhood, as they call it, especially as it is the primary factor behind the declining enrollment which has led to this review process in the first place. This communication strategy was certainly effective at keeping the neighbors out of the process. For anybody who took the trouble to find and read these voluminous documents, they would find an interesting reference to St. John's, which states "The total available parking and drop-off area is inadequate for a school with approximately 300 pupils." But no explanation as to how the Board proposes to then accommodate over 500 students on this site. This comes later in the interim staff report, in which the Board indicates plans to, and these are direct quotes, "Locate a bus drop-off lane along Cortland Drive to offset onsite circulation issues," and states that "Access to three municipal roads increases overall usable site space." The Board plans to address the site limitations by encroaching on the neighborhood. They've not been forthcoming about their plans to borrow the neighborhood streets to deal with the overflow from putting too big a school on too small a site. These residents deserve to be treated with more respect and dignity than that. It is ironic that the Ontario Catholic graduate expectations include a requirement to be, and this is again a direct quote, "An effective communicator who presents information and ideas clearly and honestly and with sensitivity to the needs of others." Our own school board did not meet the expectation that they have of our Catholic graduates. In addition to not being properly communicated, the plans for Cortland Drive simply don't make sense and will just make an existing problem worse. Let me give you some background. The bottom portion of Cortland Drive faces the back of the St. John's site, and there's five long-term residents living here, including my mother. At the south end of the school site, the street curves east and continues all the way past Drury Lane. It's not an intersection, so there's no stop sign, but you can't see around the bend when there are cars parked on both sides of the road, which also reduces traffic to one lane. A head-on collision is a very real risk here. The residents of these homes have been good neighbors to our school. They already have to deal with parents blocking their driveway and sometimes even parking in their driveway during daily school pickups. If the proposal is approved, almost another 300 students will be added to the site. Some will be bused, but many will be driven. Where are these parents and their children to go? How exactly is a school bus lane going to fit here? The scenario also makes it extremely challenging for wheelchair-accessible public transportation vehicles to provide service to these homes, and this is a reality in this aging neighborhood. These vehicles need to park on the road as they can't provide their service on a slope driveway, and they shouldn't have to fight with school buses. Especially concerning is access for emergency vehicles. This is something that should be considered in any area, but again, is of particular concern in this neighborhood. I shudder at the image of an ambulance trying to make its way down a street with school buses, cars on either side, and children crossing back and forth. Not an easy scenario to clear safely and quickly. By routing the traffic and school buses onto Cortland Drive, you're creating a precarious situation, risking the safety of the most vulnerable members of our society: young children and the elderly. The process itself represents the underlying and biggest flaw with these proposals. What the Board has termed a "consultation process," comprehensive at that, would fail to meet any normal definition of that term in a democratic society. What kind of consultation process avoids dialogue between the parties or provides a forum for question and then doesn't answer them? Why hold a consultation meeting and request for feedback after the proposals have already been submitted and locked with the ministry? What kind of message is being sent to the community when no modifications are made to the plan based on their feedback? The Board has concluded that a low response rate from stakeholders signifies agreement. This is misguided at best. It is a widely-held view among parents that this was a done deal, and there was no point in providing feedback. Turns out, in hindsight, they were kind of right. Fortunately, though, the final decisions rest with the trustees. As elected officials, you have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to engage the community and represent the interests of your constituents. I really hope that you have been listening.
Thank you. Do the trustees have any questions of the delegate? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've only got four slides, and I will be talking to you about the online petition as a result of the EMPALE survey. The Board of Trustees had stated in a report that the number of people posting on the EMPALE was not very high. Now, the feedback that we've received is that the input options on the EMPALE were specific to the proposal to consolidate the school and not to garner input from the affected people. So quite rightly, people were quite upset by the inability to provide feedback, so much so that an online petition started on the 3rd of February 2016. And the focus of the petition was twofold for the South Burlington schools, was to allow people to have a voice and show their opposition to the proposal, and also to suggest So the petition was set up on change.org, and since then, there are, it's updated. Now, there's 858 supporters have logged in and commented. Now, these comments have come from the children themselves, the parents, obviously, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and concerned community members. I also have hand-signed petitions for those people who are not technically savvy, but they wanted to show their support. So there's another 109 signed petition, the petition signed. So we've got just under 1,000 people who have either commented online or they've actually signed the paper petition. Now, I've actually read, I know this is quite sad, but I've read through all of the comments, and one thing that did surprise me was that 75% of the comments are from local residents, people who actually live in Burlington, attended the school, the children themselves. But there were approximately 25% of the comments online from Burlingtonians, if that's the correct term, as far afield as Jamaica, New Jersey, Ho Chi Minh City, Vietnam, Texas, Spain, and a lot more other locations. But they either attended one of the schools or their children had attended those schools in the past. So what I, well, you probably can't read it up on the screen because it's a bit small. I just wanted to read through some of the comments which struck me. Now, I've only been in Burlington for just under 10 years, and just starting at the top, there was a comment saying that "We have lost too many neighborhood schools in South Burlington over the past 20 years." Fairfield, Brecken, Lorry Smith, Wellington Square, Strathcona, Elizabeth Gardens, to name a few. We do not need to lose more schools. A line item in the budget should not trump the educational experience that St. Paul gives my children. Local schools are the foundations of our neighborhood. And similar to Tennesse's comment earlier, somebody has commented that "We had five houses with elderly people on our street move out. Young couples with kids moved in." And there were several, quite a few comments that people had made saying that they would be sending their children to public school if this plan goes through. And another example of several comments, now, I have two teenage children. One is autistic, and they both attended St. Raphie's. And certainly Dylan, my son, who is autistic, he greatly benefited from being in St. Raphie's and the support he got from the educational assistant there. So the comment is that our son has autism and would be lost in what has been called a "superschool." People also commented several times, "We chose this house based on the proximity to the school," which would be St. Paul's or St. Raphie's. "If St. Paul closes, I will be sending our children to the public school down the street." And my particular favorite, "There are times when the pursuit of efficiency leads to the absence of humanity." Okay, and so to finish off, there were, and as I say, having read them all, there were distinct themes to the comments. A lot of comments that people would be moving their children from a Catholic school to a public school. There was a general feeling that this would have a bad effect on the Catholic community and even losing the community completely. That a lot of families had moved into a specific catchment area for a school, and that children, especially those with special needs, would get lost in a superschool. And to quote the Halton Catholic District School Board website, "The Board of Trustees are accountable to our school community and are always willing to listen to parental concerns." So they've spoken, and they are very concerned.
Thank you. Do the trustees have any questions of this delegate? No? Thank you for your time.
Good evening, trustees, members of the Board, and all in attendance this evening. I'm here tonight to express the following concerns I have in regards to proposed school closing of St. Paul's. I know there are other parents and community members here who are going to express their own concerns and opinions, and I hope that trustees listen with an open mind and give credence to our concerns. We have all been fighting hard to protect our school. I have two children that go to St. Paul's. Alex is nine, he's in grade four, and Charlotte is five, and she's in JK, who last minute wanted to come up here with me. They love going to St. Paul's, and I hope they are able to finish their elementary education in the only school they have ever known. St. Paul has given so much to me and to my kids. This place is not just a brick-and-mortar building, not to me and not to anyone else that has been putting in countless hours fighting to keep this school open. My name is Peter Temochi, and I moved here almost five years ago. I used to live in Toronto and commute to Burlington for work. I'm a firefighter in the city of Burlington. The commute would take me, on average, 45 minutes to an hour on a good day each way. So when the opportunity came up to buy a home in Burlington, I was ecstatic. This opportunity provided me with a chance to live closer to my work, but also to be able to have more time to spend with my kids. When buying a home, the most important thing to me was being near a school where I could walk with my kids, and St. Paul's is that perfect mix. I know I'm fortunate to be able to walk with my kids to school. Those walks to and from school are hugely important to me. Those are the times when they tell me about their day, when things are the freshest in their minds and they're the most excited about what happened to them that day. Those walks mean so much to me, and I'm terrified. Terrified that if you push to close this school, that part of the day that I spend with my kids will be gone forever. Those walks are not interrupted by cell phones, TVs, or computers. It's just me and the kids. If it's snow, we play in a large field that sits between the school and our street. When it's sunny and warm, we play in the playground or the football field that we have access to. If it's cold, I carry my daughter so she can stay warm. Pretty soon, she won't be asking to be carried anymore, so I'm definitely enjoying these moments now. At times, I do feel like I'm a sherpa, carrying my daughter, her backpack, and Alex's backpack, because I like to be fair, but it's okay. I don't mind. I don't mind because they enjoy it, and I'll do it for them. The benefit of a small school is huge. School involvement is huge. We all know each other, sometimes not by name, but by through our children. For example, there goes Alex's dad, there goes Maggie's mom. That's how we know each other. Plans are made in the schoolyard: sleepovers, playdates, birthday party invites. Those are just the benefits of a small school. I am also on the school parent council committee, and I get to work with a great bunch of people. And we are planning on doing so many great things, but it's hard. Hard to focus on planning when the threat of closing is looming over our heads. Kids are asking, "Where are we going next year? When are we leaving? Are my friends going to be there?" This is all taking away from their learning and putting unnecessary stress in their I have other concerns as well, concerned on the logistics of busing, the busing of almost 280 students to St. John's. At the beginning of the proposal, it was stated that the time to reach St. John's was 15 minutes, give or take, and we argued loudly that that is an impossible number. No way is it 15 minutes from the easternmost part of the boundary to St. John's. Then, at the following meeting, the time was raised to 40 minutes. These times may not seem important to some, but to me, they are huge, especially with my youngest child, Charlotte. I'm not comfortable in sending her 40 minutes each way to school by bus. That's too long, but unfortunately, with having only one car, that choice is taken away from me, and I'll have no choice but to seriously consider removing her from the Catholic school board if that happens. And I wonder how many other parents have shared the same feeling as I do. I strongly feel bus routes and times need to be confirmed before any decision is made. There's also a concern on obesity in children, and that it's an ongoing study on how obesity's on the rise. Two quick quotes I have that I found out of the tons that I found online. This one is from the U.S. National Library of Medicine, published December 2015. It states that of 227 primary schools, 10% were overweight, 4.5% were obese. Boys, 14.9%, more so than girls, who were at 14.5%. But the key point is that they found children who walked to and from school were less likely to be overweight or obese than those who used vehicles, and those who used private cars or school buses were most likely to be overweight or obese. Another quote I found was from HealthyChildren.org, a website designed by pediatricians. They wrote in November of 2015, "For children who live close enough to walk to school, going on foot offers some real benefit. At a time when childhood obesity and the serious diseases linked with obesity is at an epidemic level, walking to school helps to ensure that children regularly get some form of exercise on a daily basis." Indeed, walking to school can become a healthy activity parents can share with their children. Also, there is a cost associated with busing. It will cost $1,653 per student per year to transport them to the new school. Walking costs zero. Those are three points that I made and why I believe that schools should remain open. We should invest in it. This community will suffer with no school available in our area. There will be no motivation for new families to move here. I wouldn't. Why would I move to an area where the only Catholic school is a minimum 40-minute bus rides? It does not make sense. I have also stated my own personal involvement with this school. I have shown you how much this school means to me, to my kids, to my neighbors, and friends. Please do not take that away from us. Just a few more words, and then I will pass the mic on. I'd just like to say, to Susan Tricht, thank you. Thank you for being the most vocal trustee and encouraging us to keep up the fight. To Tim Overholt, thank you for taking my phone calls and going over the questions that I had and answering them with the best of your ability. You provided me with a great feedback and words of encouragement to help me to keep on fighting. To the other trustees and Board members, thank you for listening to our concerns and providing valuable feedback and advice. You have encouraged all of us to come together and become a united voice in this matter. You have managed, albeit indirectly, to bring a close-knit community even closer. We will keep fighting, and we will keep pushing forward our concerns and our voices. This school is so much more than a brick-and-mortar building. It's family. Please do not take our concerns lightly. Please do not take our concerns lightly. There has been so much talk on why this school is closing and how nice this new building will be. I challenge you with this, instead of tearing down, how about building it up? Let's invest in getting new students enrolled, let's look at options like French immersion program, daycare, let's talk more about rezoning the building and building a third level. I'm not against doing what is best for the kids, all kids. I am against rushing into something that is not really planned out. We need to talk more about other options and thoroughly exhaust every avenue before we destroy a community, a playground, a school. Thank you.
Do trustees have any questions for clarification? No? Thank you so much.
My name is Vince Tortis and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Saint Raphael Parish Pastoral Council, along with Father Frank Wagner, CSC, and Father Francis Salassiar, CSC. We thank you for your time to hear our view in regards to the two motions, which if implemented would leave the Catholic schools of South Burlington without a connection to Saint Raphael Parish. The two proposals will have a negative impact on Saint Raphael Parish, as both elementary schools connected to Saint Raphael Parish will be removed. We urge the trustees to move against the Burlington Southeast and Burlington Southwest proposals, and ask the staff to prepare another which allows for at least one Catholic school integrally connected to Saint Raphael Parish. First and foremost, as you deal with these proposals, you must keep in mind that these are Roman Catholic schools. By their name, it indicates that faith is a strong component of the educational process and its structures. It has always been the vision of Catholic education that children from the community should study together, pray together, and grow in faith together. I quote from the Halton Catholic District School Board's website, "Our educational purpose is not only the transmission of knowledge, but also the formation of the whole person, body, mind, and spirit, so that our graduate can contribute to the transformation of the world in the image of God." This proposal jeopardizes the goal for which our Catholic schools exist. They will create confusion for parents in their involvement with Saint Raphael Parish. They will diminish the involvement of the children in the local parish and will negatively impact the mission of the Catholic School Board. I would like to highlight several issues that we feel the trustees should consider before the vote. A divided community. Presently, we have both Saint Paul and Saint Raphael schools in close relationship to the same parish. The proposal has Saint Paul School joining Saint John's School and Saint Raphael School closing and merging with the new school on the current Ascension site. This will create a division among the children as to where they belong. I note that the proposal does not amend the existing school boundaries, however, the proposal will break a very important boundary, the boundary of Saint Raphael Parish community. Homeschool parish collaboration being disrupted. The proposed plan irreparably disrupts the homeschool parish triad structure, which is a backbone of Catholic education. Removing both schools from Saint Raphael Parish and moving them to two different parish locations will create a major problem in continuing to maintain this triad structure for Saint Raphael Parish. How could we have a close relationship with the teachers of the students or the parents of our parish children when they are mixed together with other parish children? Is it realistic to continue to have the priests and youth minister go to the school and talk to only the children from Saint Raphael Parish? The priests and youth minister from Saint Raphael Parish, in collaboration with the teachers, actively develop plans for children for the coming year. For example, parent and student preparation and preparatory celebrations in the classroom and in Saint Raphael Parish Church. First reconciliation, including Advent penitential service and Lent and celebration of the sacrament and Eucharist in our church. The rite of enrollment, teaching mass, family and class celebrations during Easter tide in our church. And confirmation, including the rites of acceptance, enrollment, commitment and sealing in our church. That intimate connection between teachers and parish, the homes and the parish, will certainly be compromised, if not lost. This program, among all other worthwhile programs involving home, school and parish, especially sacramental preparation, should have a priority in a Roman Catholic school. I would now like to call upon Father Frank Wagner.
My experience as a pastor and as an educator, and my experience from other Catholic schools where the children of the parish were relocated to a school within another parish boundary, has shown a negative impact on the parish that had lost its school. The example I'll give you is that the parish that had twenty-five children in grade two were transferred to two different Catholic schools. The following year, we had three first communions at that parish. You see what it does to the Catholic, Catholicity of our parish and the Catholicity of the children of our parish. The children and families, understandably, will celebrate first reconciliation, first year Christian confirmation in the parish church where the school is located. In this case, Saint Raphael Parish children and families, understandably, will celebrate those sacraments in Saint John and Saint Patrick parishes, and the connection with Saint Raphael Parish is lost. Saint Raphael Church has a deep and ongoing connection to the students and teachers of both Saint Paul and Saint Raphael. The sacramental aspect is only one of the activities between Saint Raphael Parish and its two schools. Other activities include an invitation to the children and their families to be part of weekday and Sunday celebrations, and we acknowledge their work and their presence at those celebrations. For example, monthly school masses in the church. School celebrations of the sacrament of reconciliation during Advent and Lent in the church. Grade three rosary blessing and distribution with illustrations of the mystery of the rosary at Sunday Mass in October in the church. Those illustrations prepared by the grade three children. Grade four blessing and distribution of New Testaments provided by the parish and the children's illustration of New Testament events at a Sunday Mass in October in the church. This year, grade six students, preparation of materials for our annual parish day coming up in two weeks' time, Nature as the Word of God. The Hail Mary prayed with gestures in May by grade one in the church at a Sunday Mass. Crowning of Mary in, in May by grade two first communion children in the church on Sunday. Graduation exercises for grade eight in the church. Bible camp in July, most of whom are children from our schools. Baptism and profession of faith of children from the Catholic schools in order to make their first communion and confirmation because they were not baptized earlier or came from another Christian community. All these examples support the Ontario Catholic School graduate expectation, quote, "Creating discerning believers formed in the Catholic faith community." This regular interaction provides an opportunity for the parishioners to learn from the children and for the families to worship in the parish church. Since these religious and educational activities require some preparation and instruction in the class, if we are sharing the school with another parish, it will be almost impossible for us to organize. At a time when practice of Catholic faith by this generation of parents is already diminishing, the board's proposal pushes our families even further away from Saint Raphael Parish, since the children will not have any practical connection to their Saint Raphael Parish.
So we ask the question, why replace something that is clearly working? We do not say that all schools have to be next to the parish church. However, Saint Raphael Parish has enjoyed this strong connection for over fifty years and we ask the trustees to maintain what is considered a best practice and a benchmark for Catholic education. The triad of homeschool and parish has been working with Saint Raphael and Saint Paul Schools for many years and should not be discontinued. If the board's proposal is accepted, would the board allow sufficient funds? Sorry, I apologize. An important aspect, as mentioned, is the sacramental preparation. These proposals will create a particular problem when it comes to sacramental preparation. Today, each parish has the freedom to design our immediate preparation for the children and deliver them through the school. The proposals mean that two different parishes will be sharing one school. This will make the preparation very difficult, as there will be children from different parishes in the same classroom. This raises an issue as to who will prepare the children for the sacraments, especially first communion, first reconciliation and confirmation. These proposals will eliminate two schools closely tied to the church and diminish an essential part of our Catholic schools that is a collaborative and mutual religious formation by homeschool and parish. If these proposals are accepted, it will certainly diminish, if not terminate, the collaboration of Saint Raphael with the children being relocated to the new proposed school locations. For example, our Catholic school children in the public school system participate in a sacramental preparation provided by the diocesan catechetical program, but miss the integral Catholic faith education in our Catholic schools. If these proposals are accepted, we fear that even more families will opt to send their children to public schools. Although some sacramental preparation will continue, not only will there be a loss of students to our Catholic system, but also a loss of the holistic Catholic education of our parish children. As I end my presentation, I leave you with some questions to reflect on as you make this very important decision. Is this new plan primarily about the new opportunities, new programs, new gadgets and getting money from the government? Do these proposals reflect the Catholic priorities that we stand for as a Catholic faith and educational community? As a Catholic board, should we not deepen the homeschool-Saint Raphael Parish connection and focus on the sacramental life of our children? In conclusion, taking schools away from the geographical boundary of the parish is not a good plan and should be rejected. The plan divides the communities, it destroys the relationship between the homeschool and parish, and creates more problems than it solves. As a Catholic school board, we need to seriously think about the important contribution of the local parish to the spiritual growth of our children and the consequences these proposals would levy on the parish. And I have one final statement. If we believe that at the heart of Catholic education is the person of Jesus Christ and the good news of his gospel, and the mission of the school board is to develop Christ-centered individuals through homeschool and parish, then we urge you as a Catholic school board to reject these proposals.
Do trustees have any questions for clarification? Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, could perhaps Father Ryan, you give me an idea of how many elementary age students are attending your Sunday masses?
I would say, if it's an ordinary Sunday where we've not organized any special activity, we have about sixty, forty to sixty. If there is an event that we've organized between the school and the parish, then we have many more. We have practically no seating room.
Hi. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening. It would have been better under different circumstances. My name is Paul Sharman, I'm the counselor for Ward Five for the city of Burlington, which includes the Ascension and Saint Patrick Schools in my ward. My purpose here this evening is to speak to you trustees on a personal basis, recognizing that we are fellow elected officials. I don't have to address you on the matters that have already been brought to you by community members here. It is clear that they are profoundly important and important to you, and I appreciate the weight that must be on your shoulders as you go into this process. On the screen, I put in a little bit of my background, not particularly to talk about myself, but rather just to point out that we all arrived here as a result of a journey. Mine has been about informing decisions throughout my career and then making decisions. And that is what I do today. And I have to tell you that I, I know that you, as I, take them very seriously as an elected official, representing the members of our community here sitting behind me. So why we're here is to address something called an accommodation review, rather sounds like, where are we gonna sleep tonight? Doesn't sound an awful lot about, where are we gonna put our most cherished family members at the most, at the most important time in their lives, when they need us to take the most care of them, both physically and spiritually? So we started on a process that is no doubt funded primarily driven by financial needs, recognizing that the Ontario government is a bit of a challenge in that regard. My assumption here is, and I appreciate there is a rush going on, and I can only assume, and I'll let you judge that for yourselves, if you would know better or not, that the reason the rush is here is because the ministry has already told you what they want. I don't know that that's what you or the community should want. You have to be also concerned, of course, about nurturing community, nurturing community children, focus on health and education outcomes for future generations, and of course, family dynamics, and I, no doubt, you have your own families to be concerned about. So let's talk about informed choices. So elected officials are essentially a citizen panel, who are there to exercise community influence over civil service personnel, albeit you have some obligation to the board that you serve, but that does not remove your responsibility to represent the community who chose you to be here. So that would suggest to me that you must consider facts and data, and you must demand complete staff work, and that you must not make choices before they should be made. So we all know that in the absence of fact, the person with the loudest mouth wins. So I'm urging you to make sure you have facts. It's not clear you have them. In fact, I would argue that you do not. Some say the choices we elect, that we make as elected officials are not as personal, but they're wrong. All business and all government decisions are entirely personal, if only in so much as a decision, as decision makers care about those who will be affected. So you caring about your community is clearly your most profound and important role in this process today and over the next weeks. So complete data and facts. So in determining the best location, and I realize as I listen this evening, that there is a question about the best location, and perhaps it's the that there is a question about the best location, and perhaps it's the existing locations. So I just put that out there. But clearly, considering traffic volumes and risks of accidents, air quality and impact on young people's health, spiritual factors such as proximity to a church become really, really critical to the choices that you have to make. So we need to make sure that trustee authority is exercised in accordance also with all the rules. So if a rule is said that you need to comply with a due date that is passed, then you should close it down. You must make sure, again, I repeat myself, correct information has been provided to you, and if you don't know that it has, I would suggest you stop the proceeding until you are sure. So I'd like to just particularly talk about Tammy Luther, Andrea Ricky and Elena Gushen, in the sense that I have worked with them. In order to help them prepare the analysis that they provided to you this evening, that would strike me as being work that the school board should have done, have not done for you. I'm very pleased to say that these community members have done that work and therefore can help inform you, except that it informs you rather differently than the choice you are being asked to make. It is also worth noting that we didn't really hear anything from Ascension parents. I wonder what that's about? So we did hear about the availability of land. I seem to recall that board staff members were suggesting that the city of Burlington has no available land in south-east Burlington. It's not correct. I asked our staff, have you had conversations on that subject? I got two emails back. First one said, HC DSP did not ask us if we have a five-acre parcel of land to consider to swell or swap in south-east. So their response is not accurate. Second bullet, the only time the school board spoke about land matters was in regard to St Paul and Ascension in Cumberland Park. By the way, I must tell you, the city's strategic plan explicitly calls for significant population growth, specifically for young people. Where are the facts? And then you get to public engagement. And you may recall a project in 2009 called Shape Burlington, where we had serious concerns about the degree to which the city of Burlington was engaging its community members. We came up with a set of recommendations that were adopted in 2010 by the city council. As a result of that, the city of Burlington increased public engagement substantially with huge impact on all decisions. City Council, as a result of a staff direction put forward by myself and my colleague, councillor Meade Ward, who is with us this evening, to add a cycle into decision-making with respect to contentious development applications. In other words, rather than allowing it to be abbreviated, we insist it be lengthened. We need to do the same thing here. The reason we did that was to ensure that the elected officials could not only consider, but could actually react to public concerns. So Burlington's community then approved an engagement charter in 2013. Burlington is committed to respect and serve the interests of the community. Trustees, I'm speaking to you personally, you must consider the degree to which an abbreviated process can actually serve your community interests. So I'm not going to belabour the point about the community engagement charter other than read out the points that are highlighted and read. So the whole point is that the inhabitants of a city are citizens with the rights and responsibilities of citizenship based on justice, human rights, fundamental freedoms and the rule of law. The goal of community engagement is to lead to more informed and therefore better decision-making. And I can go on about public engagement at work. As a result of public engagement, we turned some land at John Boyce into a park. At Sherwood Forest Park, we deliberately dragged that process on for four years to make sure we actually represent the interests of the community. On August 14th, 2014, we engaged with thousands of community members to make sure that we did the right thing for them. That ended up with $120 million more being invested by the region and the city to improve our sewers. Appleby Village, where they wanted to put condominiums, slowed down. Lakeside Plaza, huge engagement. Trustees do not be rushed into making choices that could well be the wrong ones. I'm going to skip the end here and just talk about governance and creating value. Our purpose here is to create value for our community. Every organisation has that responsibility. You know, being whipped into action by a higher level of government, dangling jewellery in front of your eyes, we've done that with Burlington, Brand Street Pier, and look where that got us. You may recall that the Pan Am Games wanted us to build a stadium in Sherwood Forest Park, and the community slammed on the brakes. We also called for a judicial inquiry. Note, community behind me, judicial inquiry. You need to make the right choices. Coming back to the right location, you know, let's have all the locations that are appropriate. And when it comes to land availability, let me end on something really simple. Burlington city staff will consider how to make land available to locate a combined school in the best location. I will engage my colleagues to ensure that work is done officially and reported to council in a public process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions? No, thank you very much.
Chair Michaels, Vice Chair Ayaan Tomasi, trustees, staff and residents here tonight, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And thank you to all the residents who have already brought such eloquent and well-researched and thoughtful presentations to you. I'm city councillor Mary Ann Meade Ward. I represent Ward Two, which if you turn your attention to the map, you will see roughly the boundaries of Ward Two. St John Church is there with the red dot. Did I just black it? Okay, there we go. My ward actually covers three school districts in two of your school families, the St Gabe's family and the Ascension family. You'll see the catchment area in the red box up there for St John. You'll see the catchment area, sorry, that's St John on the right. St Paul is there. And then at the very top of the ward, it's St Gabe's. So I have residents that are very interested in all of this process. I'm going to speak specifically to the southwest district, but I think the comments are applicable to all of south Burlington. I want to share with you some information that you may not have and may not have considered yet in your proposal. And I do think it's important to have the most up-to-date information. So I'll start with our Burlington official plan. We are still in the process of reviewing our plan. So those numbers in terms of what we're going to become as a city have not yet been determined. So you don't have that information, but I'm going to give you the sneak preview here. Where will growth occur? Well, we know generally where it's going to occur, and you do. So one is the urban growth centre. I'll talk a little bit more about that because it's smack in the middle of Ward Two and right near St John. Our urban growth corridors, which are along Fairview, where several other of the schools, Fairview and New, are located, are arterial cores, mobility hubs around the Go Station, the downtown is one of those, and malls and plazas, which are also adjacent to the St Raves. I'll talk about that. So this is the Ward Two area overlaid on where growth is going to occur, and that is the southwest district there. Sorry, I'm going to make you crane your necks here, trustees. So these are the active sites within the built boundary. And I've put the red so you know the southwest district. Those are the active sites of where development is going to occur. And it's smack in the middle of where you're being told there's not going to be an increase in population. So the urban growth centre is here. Those are the boundaries. They are right up the spine is Brandt Street. And there's our school right there. That's where high, medium and high-density development will occur. The objectives there are 200 people or jobs within the urban growth centre by 2031, which amounts to 22,000 people. Now, with those developments that are already in our pipeline, and I'm going to speak to some that you don't know about yet, that are not captured in your numbers, 74% of our minimum density target will be reached by 2031, which isn't that far away. There are an additional 433 units that are not captured in census data that is one of the sources for your growth projections. And we need to grow by roughly 300 people or jobs per year for 17 years. That's an awful lot of people coming into that growth centre. Here's a little bit about what it looks like, and not all of this, again, will have been captured in the data that you have. So these are 22 projects that have either been approved and built, approved but not yet built. Some of them are the subject of an OMB hearing. Some are potential. So these are areas where we know that land assembly is already taking place, and we expect within the next five years to see an application. I am in constant conversation with developers in the ward. In many cases, they even meet with the residents in advance of bringing an application. So before it would show up on any of your numbers and before it would show up in your projections, we know about what's happening on the ground. And this map gives you an idea. And this was prepared a year ago. I can tell you that I could add two more dots to that projection. We also have a number of city-owned parking lots in the downtown that will be redeveloped in time. One of the ones you may have heard about is the Village Square. That has been an ongoing discussion about putting a mixed-use development of some sort there. But the city is periodically reviewing our parking laws to determine whether those would be opportunities for mixed-use, townhouse in some cases, or mid-rise in other cases. That's an awful lot of land right in the vicinity of the school that we're talking about. We also are looking much more carefully at redevelopment of aging plazas. So here we have Mary Lou's, Roseland Plaza, right across the street in the vicinity of St Raves. This is what it would look like without a lot of intensification on it. This is what it would look like if we developed to the existing permissions in the official plan and zoning. But we're undergoing a review of our official plan. It could look like that instead. That's a lot of new units. And again, those are projections that you don't have yet because this is a conversation that we have just begun in the city. So we are currently, and that slide in more detail is in your package, so I won't go through it. But we are currently in the process of an intensification review, looking at our growth allocation. So you've based your numbers on best-planning estimates as one of your sources. The existing population is shown on the left. The best-planning estimates is the red bar on the right. If we developed just to the existing official plan and zoning projections, the green line above, 218,000, would be our population. If we consider in some places in our urban growth centre, our mobility corridor, some additional density, we'd go to 254. And that is a conversation that we have already started with Halton Region. That is an ongoing dialogue. And again, that is not projected in the numbers that you have. I took this from your long-term capital plan. One of the documents that was referred to and has been work that has been done with respect to population growth estimates is with your development charges, where you have to know, you know, what's coming to set the right fee for development. So Watson and Associates prepared this, and I just would draw your attention to the line at the bottom. The rate of growth method is one of the methods to determine population projections, past rates of enrolment growth or decline in today's changing demographic and economic landscape. This method of enrolment forecasting is, quote, unreliable. That is one of the methods that you are using to project your numbers. I'd also like to talk a little bit about Burlington's strategic plan, which we just passed. And so now we're in the implementation phase. So again, very new information that wouldn't have been available when developing the plan that you have before you. This is a long-term plan. One of the goals is a city that grows. So I've talked a little bit about the intensification strategy. But here we have, within two years, developing a strategy to support young families. That is something we are very committed to. We're looking at housing supply that will allow young families and newcomers to locate in Burlington. And within four years, developing an economic migrant outreach office. Those are all things in the strategic plan, again, wouldn't have been available to you. And we are looking also, actually to step back to that plan. When we look at the growth that is happening in Burlington, and one of the things that was said in the report that you have with respect to St John is that the growth in the downtown is intended to be high-rise. So you're not expecting to see young families. But what that does, the people that are moving into those high-rises are people moving out of the neighbourhoods surrounding St Raves. Out of the neighbourhoods surrounding St Paul. Out of the neighbourhoods surrounding St Paul. It's our own Burlington residents who want to grow and age in place. They want to stay here, and they want to move downtown because it's walkable and it's a great place to be. But we also have in the downtown stable neighbourhoods that are excluded. That's why that map of the urban growth centre was a little wonky. The neighbourhoods there are intended to be stable and maintain family housing stock. So again, we have people moving, literally in some cases, across the street when they age, to move into those condos that are being developed. So this pattern, regardless of housing type, really says we are a community in transition. Five years is far too short a horizon to make a major decision like closing schools anywhere in south Burlington. Quickly go through our strategic plan. It focuses a lot on walkability. You have that information, and some of the delegates spoke to that very eloquently. And I'll just close with a comment as a parent of three children in the public system. But we all share the same ministry and the same policies. And Lake Shore Public School, where my son attended, was on the chopping block once in an exercise very much like this one. And the community rallied and saved that school. And my son had the benefit of getting the support he needed in a small school, in a community school that he could walk to. It is the heart and soul of our neighbourhood. And it saved that community, it saved that neighbourhood. And I would ask you to consider this new information, to put this decision on hold, and not to consider closing or consolidating schools in south Burlington at this time.
Any questions, councillor Meade Ward? No? Thank you very much.
Point of border, perhaps we could put forward a motion to release our student trustees so they can attend to their homework for the evening? I see the clock is almost pushing 10 o'clock. And if you would allow them, if they cared to leave, give them the opportunity to head out?
You're going to go home and study? Seconder for the motion? All in favour? You can stay.
You'd love to leave, you're on. You'd love to leave, if you want.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for the opportunity of being able to speak tonight. My name is Selena Kudjuski, and I live within two blocks of St. Paul's school. My two children graduated from St. Paul's, and I'm a retired religion and math teacher for the Halton Catholic District School Board. I'm also a grandmother of three children who attend St. Paul's school currently. The main reason I'm here before you tonight is that I believe the values taught in the gospel are best brought to light in small communities, such as those of the current St. Paul and St. John community. I have been a lifelong supporter of the Catholic school system in Ontario. I recently read an email from the Catholic trustees of this board. I wholeheartedly agreed with that email dated January the 14th of this year, thinking that it was very well thought out and made a strong argument for the continuation of supporting Catholic schools. The email indicated, and I quote, "If schools were amalgamated and hundreds of schools closed, all Ontario students would be displaced. There would be disruption and chaos in every community across the province." And again, in another part, it reads, "Recent research from the University of Western Ontario shows that amalgamation does not save any money, and that the cost of amalgamation far outstrips any savings. Why should we create chaos here in our own backyard, but at the same time tell the rest of the province to not create chaos, excuse me, in amalgamating boards? Why should we believe that amalgamation of our two community schools would save money, yet the amalgamation of boards would not? Though this email addresses province-wide amalgamation of boards, I'm sure that the general public could clearly see the hypocrisy in our own separate school board chooses to amalgamate two of our very fine school communities. I want to see growth in our schools by promoting characteristics that make our schools not necessarily better than the Ontario public schools, but what makes us distinct. One thing that should make us distinct is our relationship between school, church, and community. At this point in time, we already have 563 students in St. Paul and St. John's that have chosen the values of a small community school, parents who have chosen to send their children to a school that is visited by their parish priests, parents that recognize the faces that they meet when they are at their children's school. With consolidation, why should we create doubt in their minds and chaos in their lives? We want to keep these students, these families, in our system, not make them question why they are there in the first place. As a retired teacher of Assumption Catholic High School, I can tell you that the vast majority of students that graduate from St. Paul's come to Assumption. I am afraid that this retention rate would drop if the schools were to amalgamate. I find it is of utmost importance that students carry on their faith journey from elementary to secondary schools that are entrenched with Catholic values and traditions. It is my understanding in the proposal that the school boundary lines would not be severed, and that the entire St. Paul population would go to St. John's. I am sure this is meant to comfort people, knowing that their school population will be kept together, but I see it in another light. Both the St. John and the St. Paul community have shared secular and Catholic traditions, yet they both have their own identity that makes them separate and strong. The St. John Catholic School has been a part of the fabric of Burlington since 1948, and has served the students of downtown Burlington with distinction for over 60 years. St. Paul's Catholic School has been an integral part of the southwest Burlington area since 1968. Consolidating will certainly change each community's identity. St. Paul himself, who lived in many ancient Christian communities, clearly saw that the teachings of Jesus should hold the communities in unity, but at the same time, each community should have its own uniqueness. This uniqueness of each small community is hard to maintain if the schools, which are essential to our communities, are separated by such long distances. The distance between a new Ascension school and a renovated St. John's school would be eight kilometers. We are called to be evangelists, spreading the word. We should not try to upheave and displace communities. We should respect families, community, church, and school to be central to our continuation of faith. The parish church for St. Paul's school is St. Raphael's Church. Father Frank, Father Francis, and Christian visit St. Paul's school, often helping students grow in their faith. Due to their efforts and graces, they are not strangers in the hallways of St. Paul, but are people that are welcomed due to their precious rapport with students and staff alike. The entire student body of St. Paul attends masses at the church on a regular basis. The rosary ladies of the parish visit the school and help students grow in their faith. St. Raphael Church is also a location for sacraments of first reconciliation, first communion, and confirmation. Wouldn't it be appropriate that the students and the parents of St. Paul's keep this connection with their church? Our tradition gives our Catholic school strength. A parish priest that I knew, Father Valiket of St. Patrick Parish, once said that his vocation was to break down the barriers that keep Catholics from practicing their faith, and it was not his job to build up walls to keep them from it. I think that the trustees of our board should reflect on this advice when making their final decisions. There have been numerous comments online, on the online forum, excuse me, the online forum from families who indicate that they would switch from a Catholic to a public school if consolidation occurs. The list of reasons includes, but is not limited to, feeling that their voices are not being heard, not wanting long bus rides for their children, and the inability of making changes in their costly daycare arrangements. At this pivotal moment in the debate of the viability of the Catholic schools in Ontario, should we not want to win over this segment of the public? To break down barriers so that their children can remain in the Catholic schools instead of building up walls to keep them out? As a former teacher, I have coached numerous teams and supervised many events during my career. I am very concerned when I see the claim that one of the advantages of amalgamation is that there would be an opportunity for students to participate in extracurricular activities. I don't believe this to be necessarily true. At the heart of every extracurricular activity, there is often a teacher that is willing to dedicate their time to better the school community. If a staff is not engaged, then the number of teachers on that staff becomes irrelevant, and my experience is that a small school environment is often more encouraging of teachers to be involved. Doubling a teaching staff does not necessarily equate to doubling the amount of extracurricular, and it certainly does not mean that the student involvement grows either. For example, St. John's and St. Paul's school currently this year have a boys' basketball team. Each team has 10 to 12 players. If they merge to one school, the 10, only 10 or 12 boys will be able to play on the team versus the 20 or 24 players that they had this year. What does that have with my topic of Catholicity? Central to the Catholic faith are the eight Beatitudes, and central to the Beatitudes is empowerment of the marginalized. Will the marginalized be better off in a larger school? I think not. My grandson played for St. Paul's basketball team this year, and there were three students who have recently made Canada their home that made the team, which in a likelihood would not have happened had there been consolidation. Is it not one of our duties as preachers of the Beatitudes to invite the poor and the meek and to welcome new members to our community, to make them excel, and to help them adapt, and to lend a help in improving their self-confidence? I pray that all the stakeholders in the consolidation of St. Paul and St. John community have the continuation of our faith and the continuation of faith communities as their top priority, and I am almost certain that they do. So why do I, a non-public, quiet person, feel compelled to speak in public on this issue? It is my prayer that I have perhaps revealed an aspect of consolidations that the trustees may not have considered, an unintended consequence that may not have been brought out to light, or a certain, that may not, excuse me, or a concern that may not have been properly discerned in the quiet of their hearts. Thank you for the opportunity, and God bless you and your decision.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the trustees? No? Thank you. Excuse me, just for a moment, we need a vote to proceed past 10 o'clock, so rather than interrupt your delegation, I will ask for the vote now. Okay? Do I have a secondere? Trustee Quinn? All in favor? So move. Carry on.
Thank you. My name is Nick Popovaki, and I'm a parent of two beautiful daughters who love, love, love going to see Raves School. My presentation today is about increasing enrollment in our schools right across South Burlington, but specifically St. Raves, St. Paul's. The Halton Catholic District School Board needs to approach the problem of declining enrollment, as would any other business which finds itself in need of clientele. While the board already provides a high-quality educational product, it must continue to provide a service at a level of excellence unattainable by the competition, and as such, the Halton Catholic District School Board must consider revisiting the programming and/or the structure of the programming offered in the school's slot of foreclosure slash amalgamation. Closing schools is defeatist. We would propose we actually want to expand our local Catholic school system to meet more current and future needs. How can we expand the enrollment? Number one, programming. In the face of decreasing enrollment, behooves us as a service provider in the existing community to present, create novel and sought-after programs that would draw pupils from the public system schools that suffer from overcrowding and do not offer such programs as French immersion, advanced placement mathematics, advanced placement science, to name but a few. Number one, French immersion. There are currently no Catholic elementary schools south of the QEW which offer this program. All students from this area interested in this program are required to be bused to St. Gabriel School, a school which currently operates above capacity and requires six portables to accommodate enrollment there. There are at present two French immersion classes accounting for between 40 and 48 pupil places. Addition of these students to St. Raphael's population will result in approximately 20% increase in students at this school. The central location of St. Raphael's would dramatically decrease the travel time necessary for any student south of the QEW interested in this program. Our direct competition for enrollment in the public board, John T. Tuck, does not currently offer a French immersion program and is currently operating at capacity. Two, advanced placement programs. Students pursuing a science and/or mathematics-based post-secondary degree are often required to take six secondary mathematics credits, as well as eight secondary science credits, the equivalent of one and a half years of their four years of high school. Allowing students to obtain their grade-nine credits while still in elementary school would allow for greater flexibility with regard to their post-secondary schedules and improve the overall mental health of students in traditionally high-stress streams of study. Number two is the structure. There existed concerns in schools with smaller populations that in order to maintain ministry-mandated caps on teacher-pupil ratios, an increasing number of classes would become multilevel or split in nature. In order to avoid this, while at the same time providing for the needs of the immediate needs of the community, consideration should be given to restructuring the St. Paul-St. Raphael's student body in such a way that would allow both school communities to remain open, as well as keep students already enrolled in these schools close to their homes. St. Raphael, the current site would act as a primary school serving students from JK through to grade four. This would allow specialization of staff, programming, and the site itself in order to address the needs of younger population. By amalgamating the students at this level, a larger concentration of pupils per grade would alleviate the need for split classes. St. Paul, the current site would act as a middle school serving students from grade five through to eight. At this level, students are already being exposed to more demanding curriculum. Establish a rotary system where appropriate would allow students to benefit from the expertise of staff. Increasing the student base per grade would allow staff to offer programs to complement the more mature student body. The location of St. Paul next to a Catholic secondary school creates a natural progression for students in our board to remain in it. Proximity to a Catholic secondary school may have the added benefit of reducing the anxiety of a graduation to the next level of education by allowing for joint activities between Assumption and St. Paul Middle School. It would create an opportunity to prepare a special stream of education focused on preparation for high school, which is critical education period. Students make critical subject decisions at grade nine, 10, that can determine what they are able to take at university, therefore impacting career decisions. Are they properly prepared for that? A middle school with very modern tools and setting would likely attract many kids outside our system. It would likely not only retain our kids for our high schools, but also would stream more kids into elementary schools if we make it a preference condition of school that attendance at our elementary puts a student on the priority list, and only if there are free spots will we consider other students. The third point here is amendment to policy number I-22, brought forward by trustee Palmeri. Trustee Palmeri is proposing an amendment to policy number I-22 to include, quote, "The Halton Catholic District School Board believes in maximizing enrollment in our schools and keeping local Catholic schools open." Trustee Marai is looking at ways to improve, not close, our schools. Please vote yes at the April 12, 2016, policy meeting on Mr. Marai's proposal. The fourth point here is to market our system to increase enrollment and grow the system. We need to proactively sell the value of the separate school system to parents. What is our value proposition? Just being Catholic will clearly not attract everyone to our system, as many Catholic kids attend public schools. What will bring them back? Why not ask them? Have we done everything possible to attract more students before deciding to close schools? I don't believe we have. All of these ideas focus on growth, not contraction. Address the problem of declining numbers in a city that has grown significantly. The common theme here tonight from everyone is, we are rushing this through. Let us look at other options. Let us discuss other options. We have not opened it up to that at all. There has been no consultation with anyone but yourselves. It is a pretty sad process. Let's look at other options and involve the community. To quote Superintendent Facility Management Service, Giacomo Corbaccio at the March 22nd board meeting to trustees, "If you want to start all over again, we will start all over again." Giacomo? Yes, please. Let's start over again. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Any questions for clarification? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name's Greg Anaka, and I'm a parent of two wonderful children, both of whom attend St. Paul's. My son is currently enrolled in a senior kindergarten, as a senior kindergarten student, and my daughter is in grade two. I don't enjoy public speaking at all, so please bear with me, and the only reason why I am here is because my kids are what matter most to me, and what I see with this proposal is a whole lot of negative. I've structured my life, from where we chose to purchase our home to where I work, around sending my children to St. Paul's. Now, I've been allowed to present on two different topics today, and the first being the process and timelines that were used and allowed, and the second part of my presentation will include my thoughts on the communication between the board and the community. So to start, I would like to give a quick overview of the timelines as I understand them. Back in 2013, the board approved a Long-Term Capital Plan. This plan detailed the need to find viable solutions to address the perceived declining enrollment in the Halton Region. Approximately one year later, the Ministry of Education announced $750 million that would be made available to assist in modernization and finding efficiencies in our schools. With the announcement of this funding, it would be safe to assume that the board would make the decision to pursue it. It would also be safe to assume that parenting and community involvement would be sought out. Closer to the end of 2015, the board made changes to one of its operating policies. Now, I mention this because the change to the operating policy was listed as a reason as to why the plan was delayed. The funds that were made available, they've been known about since the announcement, and it took almost two years to amend the policy. And that policy is a policy which defines how to proceed with the school consolidation and enclosures. So now if we fast-forward to December of 2015, the Ministry of Education released a memo that advises requests for funding must have a final trustee vote by March 28, 2016. And as we know, this vote has not yet taken place, and the deadline was obviously missed. Now, in January of 2016, you, the trustees, received the initial report on the school consolidation and initiated the modified pupil accommodation review. It was modified due to the tight timeline that we were operating under, and here we are today. So based on the timeline, it is apparent that the Board is pursuing funding that is already off of the table. The Board's decision to continue this pursuit using this process needs to be questioned and questioned by the trustees. Based on the timelines noted above, one could say that the Board did not make good use of the time it was afforded, or simply the timing of everything was off and they weren't able to meet deadlines. Either way, the proposal feels very much like a snap decision, and that snap decision has huge impact on our students, parents, school staff, and community members. Public input and participation should have been high on the list of priorities. The Board had from 2013 forward to seek out an appropriate level of community involvement. Now, as a community, we would have never expected to run the show, but we sure would have very much liked to have been a part of it. These are our children after all. Now, as recently as April 1, Board staff has stated that the proposal is not something that they've just started working on. A quote from the April 1 edition of the Burlington Post states, "It is not something that staff started looking at December 16." These are long-term plans that have been under the purview of the Board for several years. So I ask again, why were there no community consultations, and why was there not a full review as opposed to a modified review? I can say with certainty that if the Board had consulted with the community via a full review, a plan that is far better suited to the circumstances would have been the result. So what is the difference between a modified review and a full review? Looking at the outline of each, it doesn't seem like much, but the difference is in fact significant. The full review requires the establishment of an accommodation review committee and public meetings, meaning more than one are to be held. This is being mentioned to help illustrate that the Board has done the bare minimum to include public input. There could have been several meetings over the timeline of events dating all the way back to 2013, meetings that include input and opinion from the public. But instead, the Board decided to run with an idea that it had, not taking into consideration the people that the decision directly affects. Now, because of this, it appears as if the Board had a desire to maintain complete control over the process and manipulate it in such a way that it allowed them to maintain that control and minimize public involvement. Now, as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, I have a daughter who's currently enrolled in grade two. And if my daughter's whole class took a test, and every child that took that test failed, what would be an appropriate response by the teacher? Would it be okay for the teacher to shrug it off and say, "Oh, well, I guess they weren't interested in what I had to say"? Or would it be a better response for the teacher to reevaluate how they communicated the lessons to the children, maybe seek input from the children who took the test to see where things went off track? My point is, is that there's a difference between communicating something and effectively communicating something. I take the position that the Board failed to effectively communicate their intent to the community. I can bolster this by pointing out the large number of signatures contained within the earlier presented petition that circulated throughout the community. The Board stated that they received 176 responses to their three questions that they posted online, while the petition contains 858 online responses, all of which they know to the proposal. The Board has also stated several times that they were surprised at how few responses they received. Our petition managed altogether, including paper copies, almost 1,000 individuals signing off on it. Why could the Board not have that level of engagement as well? The Board has stated that they hand-delivered notices to the immediate neighbors of the affected schools. I, along with other concerned individuals, have spoken to some of these neighbors and the notices that they did receive, and some of them in fact said that they did not receive any. Regardless, the notices were confusing and misleading. As previously mentioned, one notice that was delivered to area residents encouraged them to click here for more information on a piece of paper. Now, by the Board's own admission, these neighborhoods are largely elderly citizens. And since that is the case, I question the Board's method of online information gathering. It's simply not appropriate to the audience. The three methods utilized to gather community feedback were all equally inappropriate. We had an online forum, we had parking lot questions at the one community presentation that was held by the Board, and we had an online survey. The online forum was stated by the Board to be open to the public, yet there was contradictory communication that was distributed, which stated that the forum was only open to parents. That same forum was presented as a place to ask questions and receive answers, and for a short time that actually happened. But then the responses by the Board abruptly stopped, and so did use of the forum. Also, people were required to register for the forum, which is normal, but the approval took several days. I myself had to wait four days for that approval to come through. That's four days that I could have been engaging other people and communicating my thoughts and ideas. People wanted to be able to voice their opinions, but they were reined in by the approval process required to even access that method of communication. Now, that aside, during the trustee meeting on March 22, Board staff stated that many of the electronic responses received were weeded out if multiple responses originated from the same IP address. So what I would like to ask is what would happen if multiple adults lived at the same address, say a mother, father, and maybe their in-laws? They all have different perspectives, valid opinions, and different thoughts. So I'd like to ask again, what feedback was retained and what feedback was weeded out by Board staff? Now, the presentation that the Board held on March 8 gathered feedback via a parking lot format. These parking lot questions were later acknowledged by the Board and presented to the community. Some of the questions, though, were outright ignored and to this date have not been addressed. The point to be made is that the Board did gather responses, but they did nothing with them. At the Board meeting on the 22nd, Board staff stated that they did not review or consider community input as they were not required to. It would be up to the trustees to do so, and that's what we're here doing today. I understand that logic, but at the same time, as a member of the public, I find it insulting. I'm unsure as to why the Board would even ask for input at all if it had no intention of using it to help shape the plan moving forward. So in closing, to be blunt, to vote yes to the proposal means that you're voting yes to go after funding that we've already been told we missed. A yes vote would be a trustee's way of confirming the Board's perceived stance that public opinion does not count. I respectfully request that the Board of Trustees, who are elected by the people, to represent the people in their best interests, vote no and stop the proposal. The work that the Board has done to date is extremely valuable, but without the support of the community, an approval of their plan would be detrimental to the Halton Catholic District School Board. In a time of declining enrollment, the Board should be working diligently to foster positive relationships with supporters, not break up and polarize the community that we all love. I'm positive that with an appropriate amount of community input, a solution could be reached that would satisfy the requirements of the Board and the desires of the community. You, the trustees, hold the authority to take the first step towards us reaching common ground between the Board and us, and again, I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Any questions for clarification purposes? No? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's way past my bedtime, which is also happens to be when I wrote this, because I care for two young children. So I want to apologize for the atrocious proofreading in the document that I submitted. Let's start very beginning with a brief introduction. My name is Jennifer Hood. I am a low-income, sole-support parent of two children at St. James School. I'm actually the only one here tonight speaking from the St. James community. I live in the Kerr Village neighborhood. For those from Burlington or outside of Oakville who aren't familiar with the neighborhood, it's centered around a small central street that has a mix of low-rise shops with apartments over top, a high density of mid- and high-rise apartment buildings, small bungalows which are slowly turning over into two-story family homes, and a boom in condo developments happening right now. Looking at the crowd, you probably wouldn't pick me out as poor. And that's what I'm here to speak to you today. Having followed the modified accommodation review process and read the reports as they've been released, I was surprised and deeply disappointed that in the written reports there's been no substantive consideration of the fact that by closing St. James School and relocating those students to the St. Joseph's site, you would be removing a school from a vulnerable low-income neighborhood. But then maybe I shouldn't be all that surprised, because my life experience growing up in Oakville is that it is a wonderful town filled with very generous, socially-minded people who tend to think of poverty as existing somewhere else. Well, I'm here as one face of poverty in Oakville to share how not having a Catholic school in our neighborhood is going to affect my family, because I can speak to my family. To organize what I have to say, I'm going to pose a series of three questions and tell you a few stories, because I think that'll best communicate what our situation is like. I came tonight on the encouragement of my mom, good old mom to push you into tough situations you don't really want to be in. I, having read all of the documents, was resigned to the fact that the plans for the South Oakville School seemed to be set and decided on from the beginning of the process. And so told my mom that my biggest fear of what would happen after the schools combined would play out like this. My son would come home a few days into the new school year in tears and not knowing to tell me why. Because the teacher quietly told him, you know, pulled him aside and told him, "Sorry, you got to be in proper uniform tomorrow." And I would look him up and down at his generic navy-blue clothes. I knew exactly why she said what she said. And then I'd look in the closet and realize there was no McCarthy's uniforms left in there, because the two or three sets that he had were already dirty. And I'd look at the clock, and there'd be no time to do laundry that night, because an hour and a half creeping up and down to the basement of the building with two kids, it's not what I'm going to be doing on a Wednesday night when I'm exhausted. And so I'd have to send my son to school the next day in generic uniforms and try to explain to the teacher what it's like to be poor in Oakville. Now, at St. James, I've never had to worry about that happening, because the teachers and the staff, they get it. They get the demographics of the neighborhood that they're living in. But is that going to be true at the new school? Now, I don't want to make this about uniforms, because I know that's a real lightning rod issue, but it's a small thing. I hope in the next few minutes will help you come to understand how it illustrates a bigger picture of what it's like to be a low-income family. I'd like to directly take some time to review the report from Our Kids Network, a Vision for Children in Halton Report Card. Can be found online at the halton.ca website under Planning and Sustainability. The report breaks down Halton region into neighborhoods. The two neighborhoods relevant to my presentation are South Central Oakville and Southwest Oakville. South Central Oakville is defined as fourth line, east to the river, QEW, south to the lake, or very similar to the St. James catchment area. Southwest Oakville is defined in the report as the Burlington border to fourth line, QEW, south to the lake, which includes the St. Joseph and St. Dominic School areas. Families within the South Central Oakville or St. James area, 61% of families live below the low-income quota compared to 6.4% in Southwest Oakville. 18% are headed by single-parent families compared with 11% in Southwest Oakville. They're more likely to speak English as a second language. It's nearly 40% of families where English is not the first language spoken at home in that neighborhood, which is significantly higher than the rest of Oakville. And they're less likely than the Oakville average to meet the provincial expectations on standardized tests. The link between poverty and school achievement is well documented, so I'm not going to repeat it here. But there's also strong evidence that schools with mixed demographics benefit all students from low-income brackets. I'm not here to advocate against combining the schools, but to question the recommended location. So it brings me to my first question. Is the fact that St. James serves a low-income disadvantaged neighborhood been considered in the review process, and if not, why not? Or to restate that in the language of the Catholic values taught in our schools, if you're called to act with a preferential option for the poor, how can you do that if you haven't asked who are the poor that will be affected? St. James at its current location is more than a school. It acts as a hub for the community with numerous in-school and after-school extracurricular programs, most of which are free to students. It has a very close knit relationship with St. James Parish. By closing St. James School, St. James Parish will no longer have a parish school. It's accessible by multiple public transit bus routes, which is important for low-income families who may not have a car or may only have access to one car. And it's walking distance from the subsidized housing community in Oakville, which means all those kids in subsidized housing who in other ways would be able to afford things like sports can access through their school. If students from my neighborhood are bused to St. Joseph's site, there'll be a direct impact to which programs are offered and which ones kids from the neighborhood are able to participate in. Right now, we have students from St. Thomas Aquinas who walk to the school to run programs during the day and after school. They won't have that access to the students anymore. Students at the St. Joseph's site won't be able to walk to the church for Mass, again severing that relationship between school and parish. Students who'd be otherwise able to walk home may not be able to participate in after-school activities because they have to catch the bus. And then other programs continue with uncertainty. Will YMCA programs, like the school sports programs, Just the Guys, still be offered at the new school? And will funding for programs for low-income students be affected because the demographic makeup of the school has shifted? A school is always more than just a school in a low-income neighborhood. It becomes the safe place, a touch point, and the central landmark. Right now, I feel really lucky because we have both the school and the church that my children are familiar with. If there was ever serious trouble, then 24 hours a day, they could make their way through the neighborhood to the school or the church rectory and hang on the door for Father Louis. My kids, when we're leaving from after-school pickup at 5:30, one of their favorite things to do is shout, "Father Louis, what are you having for dinner?" So they know him. It's someone they know. It's someone that they're comfortable with 24 hours a day. There's somewhere in the community that they can go. And as a single mom moving into that community not knowing anyone, that was a huge safety net for us, and it's the kind of security in community that's invaluable and irreplaceable. Because if there was ever something that happened where my kids didn't want to come to me, or I couldn't be there for my kids, there's no other parent to step in. It's my community that I rely on, and they need those touch points. Related issues to all of this is whether parents using public transit or with long commutes would still be able to get their kids to and from school or before and after care and still get to work on time if the school is further away. Using my family as an example, an extra 10-minute drive to before-school care is an extra 20 minutes for me, a round trip as a parent, which turns into extra 40 minutes a day of commuting. And I've done that, where I had one kid in daycare and one kid at school with that extra 10 minutes. That turns out to 11 hours a day where my kids are in someone else's care, and it's heartbreaking. And from a practicality standpoint, it would mean we either would have to send the kids to the public school, or we'd have to move out of the neighborhood to continue going to a Catholic school. So in short, having a school that's close by and has strong community ties that relates to the students and families is far more important than having the best, latest, you know, best-equipped building. I think you know that. So my second question is, can an elementary school be kept within the neighborhood somehow? Everything that I've said so far comes back to the same core and emotional perspective that I opened with, feeling invisible in my own community. Our family's not the statistical average in Oakville, and my concern is that my kids are going to be lost in the crowd and left out of school life. It comes down to things like trying to download a 500-page PDF on a computer that runs Windows XP, or kids trying to get a prize for fundraising when the minimum goal to get a prize has been raised from $20 to $50. Or who decides how much is a reasonable cost for a field trip so that your kids can participate? Or your kid being the only one who doesn't get to order, you know, a sports team sweater because the cost is too high. Yeah, there's programs, there's funding available to, you know, through quiet conversations, get things for those students, but that's just really another form of charity. And we should be looking from the planning process through the decision-making process to seek ways to move beyond charity towards structural change that's going to eliminate barriers to disadvantaged students and create equity where there otherwise wouldn't be. So my final question is, how are you going to ensure that children like mine get the right supports when they don't fit the statistical average of the neighborhood? How are you going to make sure that my kids and kids like How are you going to make sure that my kids and kids like them from disadvantaged communities don't get lost in the shuffle because they don't stand out as part of the statistical average? So I just want to thank you for your time tonight. Give special thanks to Daniel Ross for receiving all my emails. And thank you to all the other parents, committee members, and supporters who've spoken tonight. I hope you've considered what I've had to say, not just in relation to our schools in South Oakville, but in relation to all of the schools and all of the decisions going forward. There's time to step back and really look and evaluate and make sure you have all the information and to look at this with eyes and a heart for the poor. Thank you.
Any questions for clarification? Thank you very much. If I could just interrupt for another minute, please. We need another vote to move past 10:30. Moved by Trustee Marai, seconded by Trustee Quinn. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin McCauley. I have two students that attend the St. Paul School and are part of the St. Paul community. First off, before I get into the presentation, I would like to thank Counselor Meade Ward of Ward Two and Counselor Sharman of Ward Five for taking the time to publicly speak for us. It should also be noted that the Counselor for Ward Four chose not to speak. So alternatives that were suggested, there was eight in total. The list could be longer, but this is what we chose. So when you look at the list, we have bring French immersion to South Burlington, merge St. Paul and St. Rave's. What if the Southeast proposal is accepted? How about new land for St. Paul and St. Rave? Looking at filling the current empty classrooms with daycare, Montezuri, or other rental agreements? The new specialty programs, whether it's gifted, flexible hours for high performers? Change the enrollment criteria, which I know was spoken in the last several weeks within your board meetings? Or status quo and do nothing? So if we look at the French immersion for South Burlington, the demand has increased over the last 10 years since the last attempt at French immersion in South Burlington, I believe, failed. Students leaving the South to attend French immersion in the North is currently going on right now. If we look at the Halton Public School Board, a quarter of all their elementary students are enrolled in French immersion. And that's as of the publication of the Globe and Mail on March 7, 2016. It was mentioned here earlier tonight about Tom Thompson Public School, where 57 children are enrolled in Grade One, and we have 53 of them attending French immersion. Students that we currently have in South Burlington do not have access to this program other than to travel to the North. The merge of St. Paul and St. Rave's. How about renovating one of the buildings with an add-on? Was it considered? Was there a cost put to it? Tear down and rebuild? Again, I ask, was there ever a consideration of this and was there a cost put to that? When we went to the assumption night and we had the, some of the data put in front of us, we had a before for St. John's and then after of St. John's. We had a before for St. Paul and nothing else. I ask you, how can you compare, looking at that? Anybody that is even doing a home renovation has more than one option to consider, start and a finish. I'll just ask this publicly, what about Gary Allen's site available? Somebody can either confirm or deny if that's even an option for, for the school board. If the Southeast proposal is accepted, keep St. Paul open. Allow St. Rave's parents to option either Ascension or St. Paul. And that could also apply vice versa. This would increase the numbers at St. Paul. The need for portables could be alleviated that was mentioned about the new Ascension School because of the high demand and high influx of students. If we eliminate those portables, do we not have a cost savings? Again, I ask, was it considered? Was it calculated? If we look at rental opportunities, we've seen some of the drawings talking about daycare, 88 positions for daycare opportunities. If we have an 80% utilization, can we not take the other 20% that's not being used and use that existing space to create some sort of daycare opportunity? Are we not going to create a revenue stream for the school? And I kind of look at it like this, are we not looking at getting new clients? You have them in the daycare system. You do a good job at that school. You can create a new client for the next eight to nine years at that school. Are there other options that the community could use for that 20% that's not being utilized? If we look at new programs, as far as gifted program that draws students to the South, can we make that something to look at? Flexible hours for high performers. This is something that's currently offered in Milton on the public side of the school boards. My niece is one of those students that is in the Catholic system and will be leaving to go participate in the high performer flexible hours on the public side. As it's something that's even been considered. Again, these are all just options that we'd like to know, can we look at these options? If we keep the Catholic athletes and students in our schools, we're expanding and growing. Operating Policy 122, the admissions to schools, no longer need to have one parent baptized. No longer require a child to be baptized. Small amendments to the admission policy will encourage non-Catholics to consider the Catholic system, which will help ensure a strong school for years to come. What is wrong with trying to grow the enrollment by promoting Catholic? Children will experience teachings grounded in faith of God at our wonderful Catholic schools. This aligns with the board's policy where you stay. The Halton Catholic District School Board believes in maximizing enrollment in our schools and keeping local Catholic schools open. Status quo. Most parents agree that 80% utilization and doing well academically are far more important and say change nothing. The dissent amongst parents is not about change, but it's about this specific proposal. The proposal is not in the best interest of the children. The alignment with the city of Burlington. This information was so easy to find, and I know Counselor Meade Ward from Ward Two did this very well, much better than what I've got up here for the statistics. So I will go through this really quickly. But if you just jump down to 40% of growth will be within the built-up area after 2015, and that's a requirement of Halton Region overall. Burlington is going to exceed that 40%. A key thing for me would be, if the Halton Catholic District School Board gives up a footprint in green space now, how do you propose to get that space back for future growth of Catholic education? So in conclusion, scrap this proposal because there are many other options worth exploring before operating 567 kids and their families. A smaller presence in the community does not create a stronger position for Catholic education in Halton or in Ontario. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much. This concludes the delegations to the board this evening. I would like to thank all of you for coming, for delegating, and for giving all your time and effort. Thank you very much. Moving on to our agenda, number six, we have attached the minutes of the special meeting of the board of March the 10th. We have a motion to approve those minutes. Trustee Marai, seconded by Trustee Tritz, all in favor? Thank you. Again, attached at 6.2, special meeting of the board, March 22nd, meeting minutes. Approved by Trustee Intomasi, seconded by Trustee Tritz. All in favor? Thank you. Attached at 7.1 is a summary of outstanding items from previous meetings for your information. Are there any questions? Seeing none. The action item is the board response to the delegations. Trustees in attendance may move and approve a motion after hearing the delegations to decide on the matter at hand at this, the particular meeting, to refer the meeting to a future meeting, I'm sorry, to refer the matter to a future meeting, to request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting, or just to receive for information. This matter has already been referred to the April 19th meeting for a vote to occur. Number 9.1 is the naming of the North Oakville Preserve Catholic Elementary School. Let me ask Superintendent Cipriano to talk to that, please.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, present the staff report as an update on the process of naming the new North Oakville Preserve Catholic Elementary School. On March 3rd, a committee of trustees, a parent from the new community, the newly-appointed principal, Daniela Tardo, and Father John Van Hees, our pastor at Mary Mother of God, met to review six submitted names. At this meeting, a biography of each of the names was presented and reviewed by all committee members, and it was decided that three names would be put forth to the school community for their consideration. Those three names were St. Gregory the Great, St. Kateri Tekequita, and St. Teresa de Monsieur. Stakeholders from the new, the new North Oakville Preserve community were contacted by email and asked to vote and their input, and for their input on these three names and to submit their first choice from these three names and also possibly provide any other recommended names that they chose. The biographies for the three names were sent in this email to all families, and these biographies are also attached as part of your staff report. The voting took place from Friday, March 11th to Friday, April 1st. And from the stakeholder voting, the majority of parents indicated that St. Gregory the Great was their first choice. As per, as per our board policy, I-15, School Name Selection, an action report recommending that St. Gregory the Great be submitted to Bishop Crosby for his consideration response, will be brought forward to the April 19th board meeting as an action report. And that will be brought then, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Rowe, Trustee Intomasi, and Trustee Quinn.
Just a note that St. Gregory's not the patron saint of England, St. George's, which is why he had his crosses on the flag. But he was instrumental in converting England to the Catholic faith. So that's why he's important there. So, but he's not the patron saint.
Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe I was in attendance, so I just thought maybe my name should be taken off here.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent, will there be an opportunity to, to, to make our decision on our own or are we just being asked to approve St. Gregory from the, from the 34 people who, or 31, 31 families who've cast a vote? Or are we to decide amongst the three names by ourselves?
Do you want to answer?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. The action report will be brought forward to the board. It's been past practice that the recommended name is taken, chosen from the community as their first choice. Our policy, I don't have the policy in front of me, but I can review the policy. My understanding is that it is past practice. However, it, it doesn't compel the trustees to choose the name that is, was first chosen. But once again, I'm speaking from, I'm speculating. I would have to review the policy specifically. And then, of course, it is submitted to the bishop once it's approved by the board of trustees and as an action item, to, to the bishop for his blessing and approval.
Thank you very much. Information items, 10.1, Student Trustee Update. Manuela, I don't know if you're prepared for this. Okay.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I have to say all three of them again? So for our Student Trustee Update today, we actually got the chance to do our Bowling Prevention Gala, which I feel went really well. And we actually had the presence of Paula Dawson, Trustee Rabenda, and some of the superintendents there, so that was pretty awesome. Student trustee elections are actually taking place April 26th, so there's a lot of nerves in the student senates. We are just kind of encouraging all the student senate-like groups to keep working on their Education Week initiatives. And actually, I got the chance to be a part of the Hong Kong Director of Education that came to STA. I got the chance to greet him and meet him, so that was a really cool experience for me. And under the pillar of believing, BR hosted their Think Fest, and they raised over $3,000 for Development and Peace. And schools are hosting meditation and prayer groups in the chapels. For Belonging, Bishop Redding's students is selling school swag to promote school merchandise and school spirit. And he has a World Foods Day coming to expose students to different cultures of the world. Notre Dame Student Council also took special education students on a special bowling trip. HT has a Spirit Week coming up. Teachers and student hockey games are being hosted. JV, Grade 12 mentors are planning a Grade Eight Day, which is pretty cool. And under Achieving, Bishop Redding has banquet, like banquets coming up, so that would include like athletic banquets and celebrating the clubs kind of banquets. Notre Dame has a special loan program with funds raised by a school-wide basketball tournament. And a former Holy Trinity student was selected for the BioSteel Sports All-Canadian Game. And at JV, leadership groups are started to launch touring for Grade Nine students. So that's kind of our Student Trustee Update for now.
Thank you, Manuela. Attached at 10.2 is a chart of our educational field trips. Any questions? Superintendent Cipriano would be happy to answer those. Seeing none. 10, oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering, and I appreciate that the students who will not be able to attend a Mass on Sunday but just are having a service are informed on to participate in Mass on Saturday evening, but I don't see it consistent throughout the schedules. So I'm just wondering if all the students can be made aware of the chance to go to Saturday evening Mass? It's not consistent, that's all. Perhaps they have been told.
Are you looking at anyone in particular or just in general?
So let's say Bishop Redding going to North Bay. So they're going to have a chapel service on Sunday. And then the Notre Dame as well. But the one that mentions, there's one that mentions prior, this one, Christ the King, prior to departure on Sunday morning, students are encouraged to attend Mass and receive the Eucharist on Saturday evening. Just that that was the one that they mentioned that at and not the others?
Superintendent Nar?
Certainly. So I'm not sure if this is on. When we review the, the trips, we do make sure that the schools are letting the students know. It may not be captured in there that the schools have reminded the students. In fact, we've, I know that when we've been doing some of the outdoor education trips, one of them is on here. some of the outdoor education trips, one of them is on here, we've had them change the dates around because it's difficult to have mass while they're up in Algonquin Park, so they leave later on the Sunday or whatnot, so they're always reminded to do that.
Moving on to 10.3, budget report for September 1, 2015, to February 29, 2016. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the report that we bring forward quarterly on the budget, this is for the current year that we're in, for the 15-16 fiscal year. Trustees will recall that when we brought forward the revised budget in December, which is mentioned in the background information, that we included costs, or we were requested to include for the, from the ministry costs that had been for union groups that had settled centrally, that was OECTA at the time, so we were told we had to include the costs, but we did not have the revenues. If you look at the italics at the bottom of page one of the report, which is page 321 in your agenda, we've tried to explain what happened since then, so we in fact have a revised, revised, if you will, and the end of that, if you look on to page 322, is that our revised budgeted deficit is just shy of a million dollars. Roxanne, I believe we were within about $200,000 of what we expected to get from the ministry too, maybe you can confirm that?
Certainly. Through you, Madam Chair. We had sent to the ministry a template, including costs for all the unionized groups. Within our ministry submission, however, we only had the OECTA elementary and secondary panel costs included. In the revised estimates that the ministry has announced, they have given us all the revenues for all the employee groups, and included all the costs for the unionized employee groups only. We are currently about $200,000 over what the estimated revenue was for the employee groups, however, currently doesn't include the costs for the non-unionized groups, and this is cost in relation to labor matters for the, centrally negotiated for the restoration of the grid and the lump sum payment for the year. Once we put those into our forms, we expect that they would be within 200,000 or 300,000, so we expect to be almost breaking even as per our forecast at the time of the revised estimates.
So, and Madam Chair, when we do compare, and the rest of the report, compare where we expected to, expect to be based on this far through the year, and comparing it to last year, as the appendices A1 and A2 indicate, we appear to be on target. We've also included, again, a list of all our EPO grants in appendix B, and, pardon me, our enrollment, our enrollments we're using in the budget right now for the revised estimates compared to the originals, and we have two years' actuals just to show our enrollment trend, and myself and Roxanne, or Roxanna would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have, sorry.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the treasurer, do we have a concern about the decline in enrollment trend, the 2.1% decline, is that something that will, that we predict to continue, or is that just the daily enrollment, and it could fluctuate by the end of the year?
Sorry.
Appendix C, enrollment on page 323. Yes.
That's comparing, Roxanna, that's comparing the original to the revised, right?
That's correct.
It's still up over the actuals for 14, 15. Roxanna, it would still be up, the originals were up 3.5%, so this would be up, I guess, roughly around.
Six, seven hundred, yes.
Yeah, so it's still, the enrollment is still up. We're just comparing the revised to the original, in this case.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I'm not sure, is this, can't find my page for it, did this talk about the full day kindergarten and primary class size compliance? Is that in this section?
That's probably in a later report.
Later one, okay.
Seeing no further questions, moving on to 10.4, capital projects report, as of February 29th.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, again, is our current capital projects in progress. We outline, again, the total costs that we've incurred back when the funding model was revised in 1988, 1998, it's been revised a number of times since then. We include our education development charges, site costs in here, as well as a template on each of the active capital projects, which there's really only essentially, I guess, two right now, the North Oakville Preserve and Holy Rosary, and then we also include our debenture schedules, this is the typical report that, again, we're providing to trustees quarterly.
Seeing no questions. 10.5, release of the 2016-17 grant for student needs.
And, Madam Chair, since we had such a short agenda tonight, we thought that we would add a little bit more content to it, so here it is. Apologize for all the, rather than, we could give you the links, but rather than do that, and since we're electronic, we included everything that we got from the ministry on the grants. Again, this, there is a caution with respect to these, that we're comparing the ministries' projection of where they think will be, using their system, and not the education finance information forms, which will not be out until the end of April, mid to end of April, which will really give us a more accurate snapshot on our enrollment numbers. Roxanna, I'll let you perhaps explain the table at the top of page three of the report, sorry, which, I'll give you the number in your package, it is 343, thanks, Paul. So that really attempts to show that the 1% of the increase is due to enrollment, and actually, if you look at the rest, Roxanna, do you want to just maybe walk through that? Thank you.
This is just a preliminary review of the changes in the GSN as outlining the projections. Again, these will change once the ministry forms are available to us and we input our data, but some of the changes in this year's GSN, or Grants for Student Needs, includes, for example, a certain grant for, that were paid through other educational program, other grants, so they were paid outside of the GSN, have currently been included, and they come with, of course, the corresponding expense. So there are certain, there are certain changes that have been identified in the GSN, and when we look at the $4.3 million increase, we need to consider the corresponding expenses that come with it. And when we take into account growth and the required expenditures that come with the increase in grants, we're actually showing that there is a little bit of a negative impact to the board, so although the GSN has increased over the year, once we factor all those in, and we look at the enrollment growth, it's actually, we expect to be in a small deficit position, but we won't be able to really give you better numbers until we run them through the system. So some of the changes that have been run through this particular increase are the labor matters in terms of the increase in salary benchmarks. The salary benchmarks have been put in as a 1.25%, which for certain collective agreements that are for 12-month employees, that would be a blended rate of 1.29%. So it's actually not going to cover the increases that have been negotiated for 12-month employees, they would cover those that are 10-month employees, such as teachers, for example. There's also been increases in the school foundation allocation to incorporate growth and salary benchmarks. What we are not sure is whether or not the opening of a new school has been taken into account, so once we put our schools in and allocations and square footage, that might generate some additional grants, so we can't really tell from the projections. The special education funding is in year three of four of the phase-in for the new allocation model, and it's now called the differentiated special education needs amount, and has led to an increase of about $700,000 in the allocation. As a caution, it does include the salary benchmark increase, which most of our costs in special education is our staff. The student transportation, as in previous years, incorporates increases in transportation costs and fuel charges. There's additional costs within the school board administration and governance that have been in the past paid through outside the project funding, the education program other funding, now have been moved into the GSN. Again, the corresponding expense has to be considered against those as well. There has been a change, an investment in the First Nations Metee Inuit education across the province, and some of the changes have, are as a result of changing the census data from the 2006 data to 2011, so now it would reflect the self-identified pupils within our region, a more recent survey of what those numbers look like, so leading to an increase in the investment in this area, as well as funding for a lead position. The school operations allocation, which is our funding for keeping our schools open, so operating our schools, maintenance, utilities, custodial, and so forth, has been increasing, however, not as much as we have seen in the past year, and this is when we see the second year of the top-up phase-out, when we are not being funded for underutilized space anymore. So over the three years, we will be losing $1.3 million in top-up funding. So although there has been an increase of 2% to utility benchmarks and 3.5% to keep up with electricity costs, overall, this envelope hasn't grown, has only increased by about $542,000, which part of it includes also salary benchmark increases. Again, we have to put in the numbers to see whether or not the opening of the new school has been reflected in these numbers, so there may be a change once we do that. Those were the main changes throughout the GSN, and I'd be happy to take any other questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just explain to me the earned leave plan for the OECTA, that, and how, I guess it's to do with the savings by reducing sick leave, but we don't get to keep it?
Right. Perhaps can refer that to Joe, if I may?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you, and through the chair. The hope would be that the earned leave plan would reduce overall absenteeism amongst teachers, and therefore, the savings to that would essentially translate into those teachers who have less days could essentially get and bank portions of days off to get back at a later date. So, again, the idea is to reduce absenteeism within the group, and then apply a portion of that savings towards paid days off for teachers.
So if the teacher does, is able to do that, and then they take a bank day off, can we draw part of that money back from the ministry, or not?
Again, through the chair, essentially, any savings that we would receive via improved absences would revert to the board. So, again, if we were able to improve our attendance, any savings, again, would fall to our bottom line.
Roxanna.
If I may just add, in terms of the GSN change with regards to the earned leave plan, the plan, the ministry has estimated that the savings would be half a day overall, and they have, in the funding, they have reduced our funding for half of that, and said that the board could keep the other half. As a caution, that in the funding, we are losing that off the bat. Whether or not we can realize the savings based on the plan design and based on our employees' behavior remains to be seen.
Madam Chair, just, I'd just like to point out, too, there are two good guides that try to explain the grants, and also the special ed grants, appendix E and F, that we've attached, and there's also a thorough response from the ministry on the 2016-17 education funding consultations they had, that Director Dawson and three or four of our superintendents, including myself, went to earlier on and contributed to, so it's actually, the ministry has done what they said they would do, and given us feedback on those. We are continuing to work on the budget, as indicated on the last page of the report, there's eight items listed there, it's on page 345, and appendix, appendix I, I believe it is, is the schedule for the remainder of the 2016-17 budget estimate schedule, so just pointing those out, thank you.
No further questions. 10.6, 2016-17 budget estimates update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an update on where we're at with the 16-17 budget, so what we provided in the report that we've discussed, pardon me, at admin councils, a further breakdown of specific line items pertaining to each superintendent and their responsibilities. We've also included program enhancements and new initiatives that we've gathered to date, and again, this is all based on us not having the EFIS forms, the Education Finance Information forms yet, but when we do get those, we can make a more accurate projection of our revenue, and look at whether, what potentially new initiatives could be included in the budget. On the last page of the report, it cross-references to what we were just talking about with the projected funding increase of $4.2 million in the grants, and when you look at costs that are related to the grant increase that we're going to have to include in the budget, we allude to the, about a million, or we show about a million-dollar shortfall there that Roxanna alluded to earlier. So again, these are numbers that are going to change, but this is a quick update with a little more detail on what we're doing in the budget process so far, so we wanted to keep trustees apprised of our progress, and, sorry, that was on page 501 of the report, and again, Roxanna, myself, or members of senior staff would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Intomasi.
No question, just a comment, I'd just like to thank staff for putting this together because it answers a few questions that we usually have, and it's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. 10.7, Construction Report, Superintendent Coraccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you have before you, the construction report for February? It shows that we're still on schedule, and at the next board meeting, we will present the March report. And again, we're confident that we're still pretty close to our targets that we've identified, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions trustees may have on the report.
Seeing no questions. Attached, as miscellaneous information, are the minutes of the CPIC meeting of February 1st, the Policy Committee minutes of February 9th, and the CAC minutes of February 22nd. Are there any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Just, just why it would take two months to have the minutes from the policy meeting included in this package, February 9th to an April 5 meeting?
Through you, Madam Chair. We moved the Policy Committee to the end of February, and so it didn't happen till later to be approved. Maybe Superintendent Cipriano might want to speak to that.
Through you, Madam Chair. Oh, yes, we had our, we just recently had our, completed our March policy meeting a week ago, March 29th. That may have contributed to the minutes just appearing now on your, on your agenda, because it's, we typically present the minutes, the first board meeting after the previous policy meeting. So because the late March policy meeting, I'm assuming and thinking it affected the minutes appearing on your agenda today.
Attached are two pieces of correspondence that came in after the March 22 meeting. One for Burlington-Southwest, and one for North Georgetown, for your information. We don't have to go back in camera. We need a motion to excuse Trustee Danko, and Chloe, and, not Jackson, he was here. Moved by Trustee Marais, seconded by Trustee Intomasi, all in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Trustee Quinn, seconded by Trustee Trice, all in favor? And Trustee Quinn, if you can close our meeting with a prayer, please.
Thank you. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. This is a prayer at the end of a meeting. Lord of day and night, of beginnings and endings, as we prepare to conclude this meeting, we once again lift up our hearts to you, the divine source of all life. We thank you for the gifts that have been present within this act of service to you, O God. We are grateful for the gifts of fellowship and understanding, of mutual respect and shared vision, of perseverance and insight into the common concerns we share. For these and all other graces, we are thankful. As you have blessed our coming together, now bless our departure and our journey home. May your blessing be upon us, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you to everyone for staying till the end.